Good evening, welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education's Special Meeting of November 6th, 2017. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Here.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Sprank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here. President Burton.
Here. We have a quorum. We are entering into a brief special meeting this evening before our much more lengthy Committee of the Whole meeting. We have one important item on our agenda this evening, the appointment of our Human Resources and District Services Director. Before we get to that item, we do have, as we typically do, Audience Communications. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to participate in Audience Communications this evening? Seeing none, we're going to go on with our agenda. If you'd like to follow along with our agenda, they're in your present in the room, they're located on the table just outside the door. If you're following along from home, you can find our agenda on our website, which is If you hover over our Board tab, you can drop down to the Agenda and follow along with the Agenda for the evening. As I said, this is going to be a brief meeting, and then we will follow it with a much more likely Committee of the Whole meeting, and you can find both Agendas at that same location. The next item on our agenda is Item 3 this evening, Appointment of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and District Services. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
We've let the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and employ Mr. Steven Archibald for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and District Services.
Support.
That was almost unanimous. Let's see here, we have many, I believe I heard among them Mrs. Frank.
I think you were there at that meeting. Mrs. Francis.
Yes, Mrs. Frank gets it tonight. Mrs. Oakwes, would you like to address this for us, please?
Thank you, President Burton, it's my privilege to do so. We are bringing forward the recommendation to you of Mr. Steven Archibald to take the position of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and District Services. As you know, Mr. Archibald currently serves in the role of Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Programs in District Services. He has done an exemplary job in that role overseeing not only all of our schools, staff, and programs, grade 7 through 12, but has taken on many other responsibilities, as you are aware, over the past number of years, hence the and District Services portion. He works with many of our special areas, K-12, has worked very closely on our district enrollment and building use, in addition to all of the bond implementation we have done since the inception of that work back in 2013. Mr. Archibald has been with our district for 28 years. He began as a teacher, was an assistant principal, a principal, and then came over to Central Office to serve in the role of Director of Secondary Programs, and then subsequently the Assistant Superintendent. He is widely respected, trusted, and just truly valued throughout every aspect of our district. He was very involved in the work, as you know, this spring and summer in the Human Resources area. Since we had a vacancy in May, both Mr. Archibald and Mr. McDonald took over as lead negotiators of our, working with our various employee groups, and Mr. Archibald was very involved with all of that work, and has continued to assist throughout the summer in that work along with Dr. Bill Weber, who has served as the interim Director of Human Resources. So, we are very, very pleased to have a permanent team in place of Mr. Archibald as our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources with your approval, and Mr. McDonald as our Director of Human Resources, and believe that as a team, they will serve our over 1,900 employees very, very well. We are who we are because of our people, and we are thrilled to have someone of Mr. Archibald's not only character but caliber come forward and take this role. So I certainly, with my highest recommendation, ask that you approve this motion.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions by members of the Board? Mr. Centers?
I wanted to just comment that Mr. Archibald has been just incredibly impressive ever since I've joined the Board. I've seen him take on different projects that have very different scopes, require lots of different skills, and just execute them very well, no matter what he does. It's very impressive. I have complete confidence that he'll fill this role and be very successful in it as well, so congratulations, and we're excited to see you in this new position, Steve.
Comments from any other members of the Board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. When Mr. Archibald found himself in the position this past spring and summer to continue negotiations, I think that he exceeded everyone's expectations. He really rose to that challenge, and negotiations were handled professionally, hospitably, and with the air of somebody who had more experience. So I think that I'd like to see him continue facing challenges like this and handling them as adeptly as he did that.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Mrs. Oakwes, have we thoroughly vetted Mr. Archibald? I mean, he's only been here 28 years.
We've had a pretty good look.
We've done, okay. Just wanted to make sure that we looked into his background.
Other Board members, any comments?
Congratulations.
Hopefully, congratulations. Yes, one of the things that is most reassuring for me is Mr. Archibald steps into this role, not surprisingly, we have heard such respect for Mr. Archibald from our staff. And with a position such as this, the primary responsibility is being the liaison between our staff and our district, and our parents and so forth. That is of the utmost priority. It's difficult to have someone who's got such widespread support among so many people. When you look at almost 2,000 staff members, I've yet to hear a negative comment from our staff about Mr. Archibald. He's well-respected by staff, well-respected also in the community by parents. He's got, as we said, a long history with the district, but it is very reassuring coming in. I know I've heard from our staff that they're most pleased not only that it is Mr. Archibald specifically, but also that Mr. Archibald clearly knows and understands the depth of our district. Bringing other folks into that position from outside the district would have a large, a very steep learning curve, and Mr. Archibald obviously does not have any in that respect. But it's, we're hearing good things already, and we haven't even gotten to tonight yet, so... Any other comments or questions? All right. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Centers, would you please take your role?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And President Burton?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations. And I'd like to invite Mr. Archibald up for the 197th time to the table. But the first time in your new role. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're happy to have you here.
Thank you, it's my honor. I want to thank Superintendent Oakwes and the Board for the trust and confidence that you have to place me in a position of this magnitude. Any of the things that you mentioned, and I appreciate all the very kind things, but all of it, none of it can be attributed to me alone, all of it is the work of the teams within the district, certainly the Cabinet Team, which is the absolute greatest group of people to work with, and under your direction and the Superintendent's leadership. And so I certainly look forward to working with Cabinet in a little bit different capacity, and continuing to work with the union leadership as we started this past spring, and learning the new role. And certainly, if you know the folks in the Human Resources Department, who are some of the more tireless workers that we have here, and Lynn Whitaker is one of them and is here tonight, I couldn't be more excited to be working more directly with that group. So, again, to say that I am overwhelmed with the confidence in what you're asking me to do is, would be an understatement, but I embrace this challenge, and I really look forward to this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. That is the last item on our agenda this evening. We're going to be taking a couple of minutes so that we can begin our next meeting at 6:30. About 2 minutes, okay. About 2 minutes. Okay, we will be breaking for about 2 minutes, and then we will resume our next meeting of Committee of the Whole. At this point, we are adjourned. Good afternoon, or good evening as it is. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of November 6th, 2017. If you are following along in our audience this evening, you can find agendas on the table just outside the door. If you are following along from home, you can pick up an agenda online. They can be found on our website, which is www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to pick up our agendas, a list of our agenda itself, and then our complete agenda packet that are both available there for you. Tonight's meeting is a Committee of the Whole meeting, and by that, what that means is that we're going to have some rather lengthy discussion on many items that are coming before the Board for votes in the future. Items that we're discussing tonight will not be voted upon tonight. If the Board determines that we have had ample discussion, and we are ready to vote on those items, they will be put on an agenda for the following week for a vote. If we are not yet ready for voting on these items, they may be sent back to our administration to gather more information, or for further study at a later date. So again, you'll hear a lot of discussion tonight, but you will not have any votes taken on the items that are before the Board right now. One of the primary goals of the district is respect. That is, respect student to student, adults to adult, and students to adults. And I want to just bring it forth again, as we have in several of our past meetings, that commitment begins with this Board of Education. You have our word that we will treat one another with respect, and likewise, we would also ask that anyone participating in our meetings treat everyone with respect. We don't always have to agree on everything, but that is something that this Board will not compromise on. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Are there any members of the audience who would like to participate in Audience Communications this evening? Seeing none, we're going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is Item 2, Committee of the Whole. Transportation Schedule is the first item on our agenda. Let me see here, Mr. Francis, are you covering that for us?
I brought backup.
Okay. Mr. Francis and Mrs. Scott?
Thank you very much, President Burton. We wanted to update the Board and the community. This is something we discussed at our last study session with regard to the upper elementary grades 5, 6, Student Day schedule. I'd like to first state that we are intending to change the Student Day by 7 minutes earlier at the upper elementary only, but as I state that upfront, we do want to go back and give a little background on this for those watching at home. I know the Board knows the background, because as I said, we discussed it at our last Board meeting. But for those who are watching at home and wondering where this idea came from, I wanted to give a little bit of background on that. So, at one time, we had a gap between bus runs and timing that drivers, generally speaking, would have, let's say, a high school and then an upper elementary run, the same driver would, which meant there is a good chunk of time between those runs, both AM and PM, that there was not a concern over having to get to the students picked up or dropped off and getting to the building on time. As time went on, it's actually, for those who maybe at home don't know this, quite difficult to find enough drivers. We've been working with a posting that's been up pretty much all the time, and we do train our drivers, we welcome new drivers, and we go through that process, but it's just something that's out there, all around, where drivers are needed. If you drive around different towns, you'll see bus drivers wanted in many communities. Some of the results of that, as well as through the years with some budget cuts and bus runs being consolidated through reduced student counts, et cetera, the drivers no longer can all do runs that have a gap of another school bell in between them, meaning that at one time, we may not have had an upper elementary and then a lower elementary run, so to speak, for a single driver, but we do, and we've had that for several years now. And it's always been a challenge for the Transportation Department, as well as for some parents who have children at both upper elementary and lower elementary. There is a short window between the start times and end times of 5, 6s and the K-4s. So, having gone through some construction this fall on Newburgh, and on Middle Bell, and in multiple areas through the district, and also knowing that we've got some new runs that occurred based upon the Garfield and the Cass Building closures, we've looked at some of the concerns that the Transportation Department has on timing. This isn't rampant, this isn't everywhere, not all buses are late everywhere, but there certainly have been buses in the morning getting the lower elementary students to their school with maybe not a lot of time to spare, or right when school is supposed to start, and we do have some buses that have been somewhat consistently arriving either later than they want to get to the K-4, because they're coming off of their 5, 6 run, or maybe even a few minutes late, which puts children and staff waiting on those buses longer, and then the students will be home longer. So, after some lengthy discussion at the district administration level, we did speak with Transportation. Mrs. Scott and I discussed it quite a bit. We discussed with Mrs. Oakwes and Cabinet and said, is this a feasible idea to change the day up a little bit? And what would that range be? So, the overall time range, you can't do, more is not always better, because too much then gives you trouble with the middle school run. For example, right now, in the mornings, there's a 34-minute window between middle school and upper elementary, while at the same time, the window between upper elementary and K-4 is 20 minutes. So, a driver who has a busload of upper elementary children drop off the students in the morning, and then they go and pick up all of their K-4 students and need to try to get them to their K-4 building within a 20-minute window. Now, is it possible, yes, but it can be difficult, it can be a challenge at times. So we just said, what would help this? What would make sense? And backing that Student Day up by 7 minutes was what you would call the sweet spot. Doing it only a couple of minutes isn't enough to really crack the code on this one, and going to 8, or 9, or 10 minutes is now fixing one concern and creating a new one by bumping up elementary, or upper elementary too close to, or closer to, the middle school. So the mid-spot with a 7-minute movement in the Student Day for 5, 6, actually evens the gaps between middle school to upper elementary, which would become 27 minutes, and even the upper L to lower L, which would again be 27 minutes. So, it gives them a little bit more time, them, meaning the drivers, but also parents who go from one school to the other, because they have children in multiple schools and multiple grades. We have heard from some building administration that there are certain parents that come and check their child out of the upper elementary consistently early at the end of the day, so that they can beat the traffic and get to their K-4 to pick up their child in a timely manner. So, this is something that can give a potential extra few minutes to both LPS drivers, but also to some families. So, continuing that conversation from the district level, we discussed on a couple of different occasions, this idea, the pros, the cons, what would be good, what would be a concern, how would it affect students, how would it affect families, et cetera, with the administrative teams at all three upper elementary schools. So we brought in the administrative team from Riley, Johnson, and Cooper, and had these conversations at two different times we did, in person at least, and we also talked in other communication ways. Mrs. Scott and I have also gone out and spoken to the staffs of all three upper elementary schools. So, what we want to do now is get the word out now in the Board, as the Board already knows, but to the families. This change, we are having occur when we return from the holiday break on Monday, January 8th. So we wanted to have a good 2 months plus of time to give people the opportunity to understand that an 8:34 AM current start time for students will become an 8:27 start time at Cooper, Riley, and Johnson. And the end of Student Day, which is currently 3:39, would be also up 7 minutes to 3:32 PM. Transportation is already working on putting those new bus schedules together, and the district's plan, I'll let Mrs. Scott talk a little bit about, you know, the communication plan that we're going to do, but to be certain, we are going to have repeated, repeated, repeated communication as best we can, from different modes, different methods, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'll let you talk a little bit about that and add anything that you want to, what I brought up on the time schedule.
Yeah, I think, of course, we know that one of the most important things now is, if we've made this decision, is to get this message out to everyone. And so we want to be able to use every avenue possible. So we're beginning to look at some drafts of what we want to be able to send out, whether it's, you know, e-blast to all of our families, for our principals to be able to put it out there, for then our classroom teachers to be able to copy it, because they have newsletters, to put it out on social media, just every place that we can possibly, you know, look at. Also putting this little blurb to make sure that every elementary student in December will be getting a report card. So, inside that report card is going to be this information. And so it's like, any avenue possible. So if you even think of a different one, you know, please, you know, shoot us an email and let us know, because we're just trying to find every possible venue to be able to make sure that everyone knows this information, because we know that sometimes we may overlook that e-blast or whatever, or that text, but maybe when we get, you know, we start, you know, on Facebook, all of a sudden we go, oh, there it is, I didn't know that, I didn't see that. So, again, just putting it out there in every different venue possible. So, it was suggested that for the report card, thought that was, you know, an excellent way to be able to, everyone will be getting a report card in December. So, if we start that now, they basically have a couple of months to then to make sure that everyone knows, so that on January 8th, we can begin school for the 5, 6 at 8:27.
And again, knowing that this is a shift, 7 minutes, sometimes you feel like that's nothing, but it can be something that affects families with regard to getting out the door, childcare issues, et cetera. So again, we want to make sure that we had a gap of time to give everybody basically the notification to start looking now if there is a concern with your timing. And I do believe that for some people, this is going to be difficult to figure out, what am I going to do, because 7 minutes, it makes a pretty big difference in my morning schedule or my afternoon schedule, but for some of those, there's going to be the opposite, where there are people that are going to say, I can't believe that 7 minutes is going to save me now. I'm not going to have to check my child out early, or I'm actually going to be able to drop my child off in a timely manner now. So, there's always going to be the pros and the cons with anything. I know that we may have some families that are going to say, this is going to be difficult for my family, but I think we're going to also, and you don't always hear from these folks quite as often, but this is actually going to work out really well for my family. And logically, it does spread the gaps between our Student Days from middle school to upper elementary to lower elementary a little bit more evenly. I'm sure some people are going to ask, well, if you've always had them, and you've always known they were not equated, why not do this at the beginning of the school year? Why not, you know? And those are all very legitimate questions. This year, it was brought up from within, from our Transportation Department. We sat down and discussed it, and really we said, if we know that this is occurring, and we know we want to address it, why would we wait all the way to the fall of 2018? Let's address it now. At least "now" meaning January, to give people time and notification, and an opportunity for us to study in advance. But it's important to just put it out there and say, yes, I understand, it's been that scheduled for a long time, and we're going to make a slight adjustment to it, but I think it's the right thing to do, based upon, you know, children on buses and getting to school in time. If we can make a fix, and it's, you know, it's a logical time to start it, which seems logical enough to come back from the break, then why not move forward in making that adjustment? So...
We've also had conversation with SAC, so that they're prepared for that, you know, for that slight adjustment. So, again, just trying to, I think along with that, that we're always looking for ways to better serve, and those processes, I think this is just one more of those, that's one thing I constantly see that everyone does, is being able to look at, what are there other ways that we can do that will benefit, you know, not just our students and our parents, but also our staff? So...
Any questions?
Mrs. Bradford?
My only concern, I think it's a great idea, I'm just thinking of the teachers and their schedules. You know, there's so many teachers at all those 5, 6, and with music and phys ed and all the different schedules, you know, it takes a long time for them to schedule everything in, and it seems like a logical thing to move up 7 minutes, but that can really be, I don't want to say wreak havoc, but it can be difficult on our teachers and everybody in the building to just adjust schedules and then make sure they... in the building to just adjust schedules and then make sure they can do it all.
There's no loss of student minutes in this.
No, no, that's not what's concerning me. It's just, you know, everything's written out, they've already, you know, they pow-wow together to make their schedules, and now it's like, we're moving it up seven minutes, and I'm just concerned about the teachers looking at that, the staff.
And that's why we spent time talking to the administrators at all three buildings. But we also, like what Mr. Francis said, we went out to each one of the schools, and not a one of them were worried about, there were no concerns about schedules or anything like that. It was just, okay, you know, they understood what it was. And, you know, I think there's, they realized that everything's just going to have to move, and, you know, seven minutes, we were concerned about the specials and sharing staff from school to school, but we had already looked at that, the administrators had already looked at that. There was always a period of time to be able to, some time for travel and such, that that would, you know, that was taken care of. So, I honestly, at all three buildings, we didn't hear one person say, now I'm going to have to switch my LA block, you know?
Okay.
They were... Yeah, they're, of course, our...
I think of them, because, you know, when you're in those buildings, it seems simple, it seems like a simple thing, but then I'm thinking, oh, good lord, I mean, for them to have to shift.
For most, it will be, because the seven-minute shift for most teachers and most classrooms will be doing everything exactly the same, just, it's like daylight saving time, just moving that clock. It's the specials teachers, and on a case-by-case, there were a couple of questions, oh, this teacher goes from here to here, and those are worked out on an individual basis, and as soon as a question came up, at one of the staff members brought up immediately, the principal said, I've already talked to that teacher, we've already figured it out. You know, so, I think those individual cases can be, can be and are being figured out. And like I said, we wanted to get the input on the staff. The piece of the staff day is not what we wanted to bring up to the community, because the community needs to know when their children start and when their children end. So, that's what we want to start sending out this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Am I correct in figuring that this has no impact on the 5-6 classes at Webster?
Correct. It'll only be with Riley, Johnson, and Cooper.
All right. And is there an opportunity somewhere in the break, when we change systems, to have someone go in there and reset the clocks, the lights, the alarms, everything that is time-based?
Yeah, the building supervisors will fix the bells and adjust at the buildings, each of their buzzers and bings and fongs, and depending on the tones that they use.
The heaters, the lights.
Yeah, yeah. Every, all the HVAC is on a district-wide control, and the building supervisors have access to it as well as some of the folks in the maintenance and energy department in the district. So, it'll get picked up. The bigger one is the bells, because those are more precise with regard to ons and offs. Thank you.
Mrs. Bonfield.
Just a suggestion with something of this magnitude, in the communication, and you may have already covered this, just that there's an initial contact person. So, when people are reading the information and they're all of a sudden not like, eh, who do I call? And they're making a lot of phone calls, it might make them more comfortable if there's either a person to call, or, you know, talk to your principal, or someone that can cover some of the really, the initial questions. I know if there's some more difficult questions, but if you can make people comfortable with having an initial contact right off the bat that says, hey, called this telephone number, you have concerns or anything.
And some of that's going to be built in, hopefully, with the communications that we send out. And I say, hopefully, not thinking like, we won't put it in there, but I mean, hopefully some of the information will get out. That will be our first wave. And I guess, that's a very good point, and I guess we need to think about topically as well. So, if this is a, you know, bus-riding question, who to direct those questions to, and if this is a my child's daily schedule question, then who would that? Because those probably wouldn't be the same first, same point person. So, we could come up with two or maybe three-point people based upon the generality of the question. That's a good point.
And I think when people, if they're frustrated about the change, if they have to call and get shuffled around, it makes it more frustrating. So, if they can just pick up the phone and be like, and get their question answered right away, sometimes they just want to be heard.
I agree.
That'll be helpful.
As a follow-up to that, one of the other things that the board mentioned, which was a great suggestion the last time we met in study session, was to include a little bit of the background and the rationale for making the change, and then also why mid-year. And so, that will also be part of the communication that will go out, both on the website, email, newsletters, the direct note in the report card. So, we'll put a little bit of that background information as well, as well as information as one of the stories on our website, just so folks understand what the rationale is for making that decision and how, what the pros will be, both at the 5-6 level and the K-4 level.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Maybe these kids are too old for this, but I would make a point to contact non-SAC before and after-school care facilities to make sure they're aware of the change, Learning Tree and so on. Anyone that communicates children back and forth to the buildings from their facility would need to be aware of the change.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Frank.
I just want to applaud your teams, too, because this, as you said, Mrs. Scott, just continuous improvement, not waiting for the next year, I think is a great thing to say, we have a problem, let's solve it now, let's figure out a way to solve it now, to communicate. And I just think that that's great. So, thank you to both of you and your teams for really working to improve things where we need to improve. So, thank you for that. And I also wanted to say, too, it will be good for kids who are in middle school as well, or the junior high level, for families, I guess I should say, because if you have an eight o'clock drop-off, it will make it not so big of a gap between the next drop-off if you're going to one of the upper elementary schools. So, that actually benefits three levels if that continues, because sometimes if you drop off at a middle school, you're waiting at, I'm waiting at Riley, for a long time till they're opening because there is a bigger gap there. So, I think it will, there will be some problems with it, but I think there will also be some people who are pleased that that gap is shortened, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
One suggestion that I thought of when you were asking of different venues to get this word out, I'm not sure if this would be a good idea or not, and it's your decision, but we do have a phone call system that we utilize for school closings, so we may want to utilize that at some point in the process. That's not a board decision, so you don't need to get back with us on that, but just something that crossed my mind. Along the board line, and I meant to check into this after our study session, and I forgot, we do need to double-check that we don't have written policy or written administrative procedure. I suspect it's probably in administrative procedures that lists what our start and end times of the day are. I'm pretty certain I saw it somewhere in there, but if so, we need to make sure that we get that taken care of. If it's policy, it would take two readings at board meetings. If it's written, if it's administrative procedure, of course, just bringing it forward that it's done is all that we need.
I did check on if there are any board policies or administrative procedures for bus or bus times, et cetera, et cetera. There is nothing on that, but I'll have to do a search on actual school start-stop times.
I think it's, yeah, I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's one for start and end times of the day, but I may be wrong about that.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you very much. Hopefully, it will go smoothly and be communicated excessively. Thank you. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, Item 3, Finance Committee, and 3A is Consortium Pricing Versus Bidding. Oh, I'm sorry? President Burton, may I just make a quick announcement? When we're under-committee the hold, it's not an item for discussion. I just wanted to let the community know that we received an excellent response to the Parent Teacher Conference Survey, information we've put out to both high school parents and middle school parents following conferences. We received, I believe, 840 responses from high school parents, which was a significant response, and about 350, or maybe a bit more, from our middle school parents. So, we are in the process of disaggregating that data and taking a look at it. And so, at our future study session, we'll bring that information back to the board, but I wanted to just take a moment and thank the community for their responsiveness and their suggestions and the information that they sent us. They sent additional emails as well with some ideas, and so, we've compiled all of that, and we'll bring that to you at our next study session. With conferences, I know there's never a perfect way to do, especially the secondary conferences, and over all the years that many of us have had kids in the school system, it's a continual tweaking of that process. So, thank you to the parents for being patient, and the staff for being patient through the process, and thank you very much for letting us know what's going well and what's not, because this is a district, and this is certainly an example of things that get tweaked every few years, because we're trying to get it to go as efficiently as possible. So, that's terrific. Thank you. You're so welcome. And Finance Committee, I'll turn over to Mrs. Bonfield.
Thank you, President Burton. We have, Mrs. Smith, at one point, I was asked if we could possibly talk a little bit about the difference between consortium prices versus bidding, and why some of these are more advantageous than others, and just sort of the differences in why some of the consortium pricing is even probably better than some of the bidding pricing, and just the difference in why we do it and how it works into our policy and regulations and meeting our obligations. So, Mrs. Smith, take it away, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonfield. Just to remind the board and the public, back in May, we updated our board policy on purchasing, and in our board policy, we spell out that competitive pricing is to be pursued by following legally required processes. So, tonight, we're touching upon what is legally required and specifically regarding competitive bids. So, every year, the state comes out with a new bid base amount, which means that anything competitive bids must be obtained for construction, addition, repair, or renovation of school buildings, as well as procurement of supplies, materials, and equipment over a certain threshold, and they adjust that every year based on the CPI. So, what we did in our board policy is took a look at what the current amount is, which is $23,881, that's set by the state, and our current board policy is $23,000, just a nice even number so everybody can keep straight. So, the purpose of the competitive bid bidding process is to secure the most able and efficient performance, also from the most responsible contractors, and upon terms beneficial to the public. So, the only exception to that, so again, we go out to bid for anything over than $23,000 and then bring that to the board for approval. The only exception to that rule is when the district makes purchases from a cooperative bulk purchasing program, such as MyDeal. And so, MyDeal is an extended purchasing program which allows Michigan local units of government to use state contracts to buy goods and services, and local government benefits directly from the reduced cost of goods and services and indirectly by limiting the time needed to process bids. So, in essence, we're getting the advantage of the state kind of already going out and doing the bid for us, and then we can take advantage of that, like the volume discounts too. So, a few more advantages of that, extended purchasing leads to reduced costs derived from leveraging purchasing power, improved specifications, and increased competition. And the advantages are not limited to this, actual dollar savings on good, indirect savings are also realized through the elimination of administrative duplication, such as the district having to write and publish bids and then open them, maintaining a large and diverse pool of potential bidders, and then also accepting, you know, reviewing the bids and everything like that. All that work has been done for us. So, when we are doing those large purchases, we'll go out and often look to see first if it's been already competitively bid through one of the purchasing programs, and then take a look and see if we feel comfortable pursuing that. We always have the right, we don't, you know, just because it's been bid before through a cooperative purchasing program, we don't have to go with that. You know, we can always do it on our own. But historically, it's proved very beneficial to join on with those cooperative programs because of that volume discount that we receive. So, just a little history. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions? That's great.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonfield. Mrs. Smith, as long as the board policy is a number that's either equal to or below the state number, we comply, right?
Correct, yep. And the plan with that, too, is so that we don't have to update our procedures for our district employees every year. The idea was that we would set the threshold at $23,000, and then maybe by the time the state gets up to $25,000, then bring a revised board policy for approval with a $25,000 threshold. So, we will always keep our threshold below the state's threshold so that we're compliant. But again, just for, yeah, to keep things simple and easy to remember, the even dollar amount is what we are currently doing.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No action.
At this time, we'll turn it over to Item 4, Building in Sight. Turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. Yeah, it looks like we have nine items, and we're going to make a slight adjustment to the schedule, and we're going to move Item G at the conclusion of Item D. Is that, am I right on that, Mr. Francis?
Please.
Okay. That shouldn't be a problem. And our first item is going to be the Quarterly Dash Report, and we have Mr. Francis and Mr. Smith. Good to see you tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. We are going to start off with the Quarterly Dashboard Report, which would take us through September of 2017. Mr. Smith is here on behalf, he's owner's rep from Plant Marine Cressa, and he's going to address both bond and some of the sinking fund as well, which at one point, we added in to the Quarterly Dashboard Report, I don't know how long ago, but it seems to be standard now. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Scott Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Good evening. It was two months ago when we came back and we did the last Quarterly Dashboard Report. Obviously, normally, we do that in three-month increments generally, but just as a reminder, a lot of this stuff is done, updated, and reconciled quarterly. So, our budget summary, which is at the top of the page, is actually a running, is done current, so that was done through October 23rd. And then, if you go down below under the Cash Finances, that's part of our quarterly reconciliation, and that's done through September 30th. So, there is some differences in the numbers, and that's really just a timing difference in the way the data is reconciled. Just briefly touching, because we only do this every quarter, but going back in time to restate quickly the original goals and objectives of the bond, which was passed several years ago now, almost five years ago, $195 million bond, and just why now was, there were things that were needed within the district, was more of a critical upgrades renovation. We added a lot of technology into the bond. We've got older buildings that had some improvements that were beyond their years, maybe were inefficient at this stage of the game, and we took advantage of new technology in terms of particularly HVAC and electrical, and also building envelopes such as windows to improve those things, with the goals of improving our facilities for our staff and students, improving school safety. We've done secured entries at all of the bond schools to date, and we'll continue to do that into the next year's program in the design as well, hoping to achieve maintenance, energy savings throughout. And again, a big focus on equality amongst the buildings. To date, we've been very consistent, generally speaking, with the renovations throughout, and, you know, each building has its own unique features, characteristics, and needs, but from a general perspective, the bond scope's been identified, and we've been consistent in implementing it throughout.
I consistent's a good word versus equal, because not everything can be exactly the same, but it's consistent with regard to finishes, et cetera.
In looking at Block 2, which would be on the top in the middle, this really is our budget summary to date. And what's changed really since last time is we've added a column in the middle called Capital Projects Fund. And as you'll recall, when we were back here previously to award the Garfield Community School work, we noted that a portion of that would be coming out of the Capital Projects Fund, and we've stated that to be about a half million dollars worth of work. So, that's really the new, the biggest change here. So, now, our current budget is really $200 million, $500,000, of which not all of that is bond-related, so we had the $195 from the original bond, and $5 million for the sinking fund, and then another half million from the Capital Projects Fund. Not a lot of changes since then in terms of the budget. The commitments have gone up a couple million, and that's largely due to the awards at Garfield Community School that were done a month or so ago.
Just to update that, we are in the midst of that, so the commitments are there for Garfield, because that was begun just after the school year started with regard to the piece for the... to the piece for the Western Wayne Skill Center, which is planning to move over later in January. So, being in the midst of that, we have contracts open, purchase orders open, et cetera, so that money's being committed, because we're in the midst of that renovation.
Our three-month look ahead schedule, we are going to do a bond presentation later with the next summer's work, but since our Quarterly Dashboard also touches on the sinking fund, we thought it'd be relevant to go through kind of the initiatives and the things that we're working on currently and are projecting out over the next few months. Again, our goals are really to get what's going closed out, get those out of the way, get those completed, and those accounting and completion, construction items complete. But we're in the process of closing out Stevenson High School. We're also closing out, I guess I would call it the first phase of Churchill High School, but that's, closing out's probably not the right word there, since it's ongoing through the end of next summer. But we are active in closing out some of the miscellaneous projects we did this summer at Garfield with their GSRP program, Randolph, Frost, Cooper. Those should be wrapping up here in the next month or so. As Mr. Francis indicated, we are knee-deep into construction over there at Garfield Community School with the anticipated turnovers sometime around the middle of January, and we'll start coordinating the owner move-in with those items in coordination for the second term over there. We're also closing out some of our sinking fund projects from this past summer, which is predominantly asphalt replacement work at several schools, as well as the new tennis courts over at Churchill High School, and the water main replacement work at Holmes. We are also in design work for next summer sinking fund work, pavement replacement work, which is work at Stevenson, Franklin, Roosevelt, Cooper, Randolph, Grant, and Buchanan. That scope's changed around a little bit over the last few weeks.
I can jump in real quick on that one. So, originally, we had spoken board, and we did update on this, but originally Stevenson, Franklin, Roosevelt, and Cooper were always planned to be done in the summer of '18 with the guard of the paving project. In fact, we knew that there was, we had a study done last spring, a traffic study done for Roosevelt, so those have been on the docket to do. We actually, from feedback from community, family, our district communications team and the...
Our transition.
Transition team, my apologies. District, the DTT, District Transition Team, the feedback we've had on some concerns that are going on with the parking lots at Randolph, Grant, and Buchanan, we decided to shift the focus onto those buildings and those parking lots. We have NTH currently doing the review and some due diligence on them with regard to possibilities of expanded parking spots and/or flow. So, most of the flow, most of the spots, most of what's going on at those three buildings, we, as you know, we just did the parking lots in those buildings or for those buildings, but we're looking now to see if we can do some additional scope. So, that's why we've engaged NTH to add them onto the 2018 Summer Sinking Fund Program with regard to paving. So, we don't have details of what that's going to be yet, because as Mr. Smith said, literally, in the last couple of weeks, we asked NTH to say, get over there, get looking at it, and see what kind of engineering is needed, and what we can do with regard to not only the potential for expanding, but how that involves impervious surface and stormwater and the county of Wayne and their involvement in permits and timetables and the whole thing. So, we've begun that process.
And what we did is we shifted, originally, we were anticipating doing some work at Johnson and Emerson this summer. We've kind of, with the change in priorities, we've kind of shifted those into probably the following summer in terms of where we're at. We still have all the information we've got, the design that's been completed to date. We'll just table it and pick it up when the timing's appropriate.
There's just only so much scope you can handle in one summer, and we're starting to butt up against that ceiling of how much can one district do in one summer and keep an eye on it and know which way is up and which way is down. So, we had to take something off the plate to be able to add Grant and Randolph and Buchanan.
And what we've really done with that is we've broken...
One question or comment about the parking. Some folks may have asked us, I know in the past, why don't we just expand our parking lots? But just so that the public is aware, we have to have permission from Wayne County in order to do that, and that's not, that is not a decision that the district alone can make.
Correct.
Can you speak a little bit to what is required and what our limitations are on adding parking?
Certainly. With anything, usually, there's some sort of plan review process. Depending on how much you're choosing to bite off, that process can change. It could adjust who you need to submit plans and drawings to. Depending on the site, there are different authorities, you know, some schools here in Livonia are governed by City of Westland, some are City of Livonia. Depending on where that storm drain eventually flows into, it could start to become something that Wayne County gets involved with. So, it's very site-specific in terms of what it is. Generally, if you're just replacing a square foot of asphalt with a square foot of asphalt, that can cut down on what's needed in terms of permitting and various approvals. Anytime you start to add a whole parking lot or change the, increase really, the amount of impervious area, which a parking lot would do, there's lots of engineering calculations and analysis that goes on that says, okay, what are we going to do with all that increased water? How are we going to detain it or retain it? Where does it go, and how fast will it get there? And all of a sudden, the green light goes on, and the light bulb starts triggering, and a lot of people start wondering what's going on and how it will affect people, not only on your site, but downstream of your site as well. So, that's something that we need to look at. NTH is looking at in terms of the engineering, the approvals that would be needed. What are the site restraints and constrictions of that particular site? What can we even do, let alone with or without, like Wayne County's approval? But we want to get into it now. We want to start asking those questions, because if... This can be a lengthy process, but the sooner we get asking, hopefully, our chances of doing something long-term and permanent can be done for next summer.
And somewhat married to that same question is, do we necessarily even own land that people look at and say, well, there's a grassy spot. Can't you just go over that? Even if we had all, could get all of those approvals in time, we may not actually own that land to be able to do it. So, those both play together.
Yeah, Grant would be a good example of that scenario.
So, that, for example, is why we needed to put the retention pond in at Stevenson?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, not to belabor this, because I know this is the Quarterly Dashboard Report, but I think that's a really important question to point out, President Burton, because just as recently as last week, when we had a community meeting on another topic, we had a number of folks asking about, well, you just need to add more parking or create a different driveway for flow, and we certainly wish it were that easy, because thankfully, we do have the funding within the sinking fund to be able to do that. However, as Mr. Smith pointed out, it's a much more complex process with regard to detention and retention ponds and approvals of storm drainage and things. So, unfortunately, it's just not that simple to say, even if we do own the plot of land, that we can simply clear that and add a parking lot or add an asphalt area. So, we're certainly not saying it can't be done, but it is generally a six-to-eight-month process, which is why, at the point in time where we were last year, the decisions that we made, especially where we had merged school communities, we were able to make some changes to flow and to design and to restriping lots, all of the things that are within our purview. Simply clearing land and adding a lot was not something we would have had the time to be able to do. And one thing we didn't want to do is, again, trying to be nimble and responsive. We didn't just want to say, well, no, we had these schools planned for 2018, so no matter what, we're going to have to wait till 2019. The team took a look at this and said, this is a high priority. This is something we've heard from the community, from our administration at the schools, and so we'd like to see what we can do. Again, we need to also work within the confines of what NTH comes back and tells us we can do with regard to both flow and parking. Both items are being studied at each of those locations. So, they each have a little different tweak that we'd like to see, but I'm glad you brought up that question, because it's something we get asked quite often, and it's nice to be able to address that with Mr. Smith here this evening.
For the dashboard.
Yeah. So, what we've done with that, we've really broken those projects into kind of two phases. The first would be the ones, you know, that are more readily definable, things we can move forward with, and that's, we'll call Bid Package 1. That's going to be the work at Stevenson, Franklin, and also at Roosevelt. We're probably going to be putting those out to bid this week, and we'll take bids somewhere around Thanksgiving, and then we'll be back in, I would imagine, December, presenting that information to you guys for consideration.
Yes, because they were part of the original plan and scope of work for the summer of '18, so NTH had already designed those. The team had been meeting on those, so we're ahead. Now, they're going to turn and go to Phase 2, as Mr. Smith's going to mention.
So, Phase 2 would be the, where there's more, Cooper's more of an involved site. There's more things to consider there with their drainage and such. And then also, as Ms. Holquist stated, Randolph, Grant, and Buchanan, the issues are a little more complex and are under study right now. But presumably, we can get through that. We would put a Bid Package 2 out probably early next year and start to get those bid out. And then, of course, then we'll touch much more in depth later in our presentation tonight, but we have the 2018 bond projects, too, which are currently being designed. We're just wrapping up our design development process, and we'll be presenting some slides tonight to bring you further up to speed on the details of those. The goal, again, there would be to have things designed out by the end of, just before Christmas, go have lots of food, enjoy a Christmas break, hit it hard, refreshed, first of next year, get it out for bid, and then come back to you guys early next year with those recommendations. So, that would include Webster, Buchanan, Jackson, the Career Technical Center, and also our entryway projects, which are kind of synonymous with each renovation, but in this package, we'd be picking up some additional ones, too, like at Churchill, which we did not include originally, as we're still contemplating some options there, and then some other areas that we'll touch on in the presentation. But our intention is to create a separate bid package for that. It's very specialized work. We think there's some economies, some efficiencies in consolidating them into a single package, because the work is not overly difficult, but if you look at each individual site, there's a lot more meat when it comes to packaging seven or eight different entry features.
We've got some renderings in the PowerPoint that are coming up, so we'll just save that for when we get there. They look nice, though, their color renderings, and they look very good when you see them up on the screen. And there's some good ideas out of this. Churchill was more challenging than Stevenson or Franklin, just based upon the shape and direction of their main entrance, but I think it's a pretty sharp design. And I know the folks in the main office over at Churchill are excited when we talked about and how it's going to be, how it's going to play out with the arch and the way they're going to draw foot traffic into the main door at the vestibule. It's a teaser for the...
Just kind of ripping through our critical project issues, probably of that list, what's most important in this group is we just want to continue the design work for next summer. We're getting decisions made. We're meeting with staff and administration and working through decisions related to those schools. So, that's really for the summer bond projects, as well as the sinking fund projects. We're also going to start talking about athletic improvements here in the district, and part of our agenda tonight, too, is to present to you an architect, engineer, foresight design who specializes in that sort of work, and see if we can get them on board to start heading down that direction.
To Scott's point about design work and working with the buildings, that's something we've been doing at this point. We have design drawings, and you're going to see floor plans and different things in the presentation, but we still go out to, I've said, we still go out to the Career Center. We sit down with the folks in those buildings, the principal and other members of their team, and say, you know, now that we're standing in this building and we're all together, you know, what is there that maybe was missed or that you see is a real need, and can we address it? So, we've been doing that the past couple of weeks and traveling around with Katie, the architect from French, and getting the team together, and Tim Clan for IT, and Rob Gregor from Martin Mallow, et cetera. So, that's something that we're in that design phase, tweaking and getting input at the building level and seeing what we can and can't do.
Jumping to the middle block on the lower section, this is our cash flow finances. Just because we do this quarterly, it's worth reminding everybody that Series 1 of the bond was sold in two series. Series 1 has been officially reconciled and closed out, and we've been into Series 2 now for quite a while. Actuals paid through September 30th are just over $35 million. That's up about $8 million from our last quarterly, and most of that is just the nature of busy summers in the construction world in the school districts, so that's mostly Churchill, Stevenson, and some of those miscellaneous projects we did at various schools over the summer. And then our phasing schedule, that really hasn't changed. Again, next year, we'll be doing work at Churchill, continuing Garfield, Buchanan, Webster, Jackson, the Career Center, and then also our entryway features. The goal of all which would be to complete those by the end of next summer.
Questions? Any other questions?
Thank you. On the dashboard, so we'll move to Item B, Presentation on District-Wide Roofing Assessment Report. That's Tab B in our binder.
Yes, the binder should match, the tabs should match the related items, except for E. We're rolling that up to become, come after D.
G will become E, right?
Correct. Correct. With regard to Roofing Technology Associates, RTA, and their report, I just want to, before Mr. Smith goes into his review, I just want to remind everybody that what we're doing tonight is exactly that, reviewing the report that they did. We engaged them to check all the roofs in the district, and now this is their assessment. So, sometimes you want to right away say, okay, what are we doing, and what's the plan, and where are we going out there and fixing? We aren't at that finalized point yet. When we do, we certainly will bring that back to the board. Tonight's discussion was simply to review the results of what we asked them to do for us. So, just as a preface for those at home, to understand that that's the step tonight.
Just to clarify, what you're saying is that this report is going to be the foundation going forward to determine what projects need to be done.
Correct, but we don't have those answers yet as far as what exactly we're going to be doing and in what ways. You'll see a few different recommendations from them on different timed-out projects of doing roofs, et cetera. We don't have a decision. This is just their take on things. So, we can go through it, and they did a nice job of it, but again, this is their report, and we have to then digest it and say, what do we want to do from here?
I think those are all excellent points. Just going back, this is, to clarify, this is something that we engaged RTA, Roofing Technology Associates, out of the sinking fund. This is not a bond function at the moment. But we did, we asked them to go back through all the district buildings, including CAS, for example, and just have them use their professional experience in doing these sorts of things, and come back and really essentially assign a grade to the buildings, you know, how was the roof? I mean, we all knew that the roofs were done, you know, roughly in the early 2000s, so they all have a similar shelf life on them, but just like anything else, sometimes things last or hold up better, even though they're the same age, and vice versa. There's not necessarily a rhyme or reason behind all of that. So, what they did is they spent the last few months traveling to each site, going through them, looking, walking the roofs, measuring the roofs, looking for things that are holding up well, looking for things that need work. What does it all mean? If you continue to turn into it, what they do is they break the roofs down into multiple areas. In fact, they took all of the roofing area, all of the schools, and broke them down into roughly 306 different areas. Obviously, the high schools have more areas, but these would be areas, you know, part of a building is higher. They'd look at the gym area, independent, because it has its own roof line, it has its own. If they look, get up there, and they notice that maybe part of it's been replaced more recently than the others, they're going to draw a definitive line there, and they're going to isolate it. So, they might have A through G, or A through E, A through Z, depending on the school. It just become, it's a function of the complexity of the roof. Like, Grant would probably have more, for example. There's a lot of different roof lines there. But in summary, there's over 300 different sections that they broke it down into, and they go through and they look at that, and they essentially create something called an RCI, which is a roof condition index, and it's really that. It's an index. It's an indicator of how well that roof is holding up and whatnot, understanding that sometimes part of a roof may be better. up and whatnot, understanding that sometimes part of a roof may be better or worse than that. But when you do a, what we asked them to do is look at it from a weighted average perspective. You know, we don't want to know that the average of six different areas is 60, is an RCI of 60. What is it if you weigh it out? Because certainly if a larger area has a lower RCI, we want that to show that that building needs a little more attention than something with just a straight average.
And for those at home that aren't able to see what we're looking at, just a reminder that we have over 2.6 million square feet of roofing in the district. So we have quite a bit of area that we're talking about here.
And just a question, so I understand the graphs and the charts, the lower the RCI, the more...
Low bad, yeah.
The more bad.
Yeah, low bad.
Low bad, okay.
So they have on here, we asked them to create this, I don't know if this is with regard to the failed to very poor condition, poor condition, fair, that that's necessarily an industry standard. We said, would you give us something that can show? Because we like to have things translated. I mean, it's just, it's just easier sometimes. So I guess there's pros and cons to that. You know, the pro is it's easy to look at something and say, okay, anything between zero and 45 RCI, we're calling either failed to very, very poor, and that means that it's not in good shape. But there's certainly going to be a difference on how long something can last and if it's in the, you know, at 44 versus 12. And we did have a section that's, a small section somewhere that was, I believe, a 12, but it's a very small area. So just to lay out that, this was their take, and they said, this is the best way we can think of to say, this is where, what the numbers mean, just for lay folks to look at, okay, if that helps. I mean, I guess the one thing for me to point out is that in the poor to very poor, we have, you know, 65% of our square footage is there. So there's quite a bit of square footage to cover here. So that's one of the things why I prefaced with, we don't have the laid out plan yet. We need to sit and come up with that idea of how do we best attack this? Because you can only do so much in any given summer. And that's when this work gets done, is in summer.
Do you want to take us through just the couple of pages here with regard to the weighted schedule and where some of those breakpoints are? Because we did include, I believe, Mr. Terrell, when we went through the review of the bond scope, the remaining bond scope, and the sinking fund, the long-term sinking fund recommendations that we began to discuss in our last study session. You did, you may recall that you saw some roof replacements listed in there. And so, again, you may recall that you saw, we saw some things on year one, year two, and year three. So we've had some preliminary conversations based on this need to replace cycle. But again, we'll take a deeper look at that. But you may recall, just, I don't want to have a confusion there, when we did discuss the potential bond, remaining bond work and next five years of sinking fund, we did include some dollars as a placeholder with regard to roofing replacement.
Mr. Senator, is there a question?
Yeah, I was just also looking at the rest of the one, two, three, four categories. The last two are good or very good, and that only is 6.2%. So not only do we have a large amount that's poor or failing, but we don't have, conversely, a good portion that's also good or fair. So we, it's almost as though we have to replace everything, right?
Well, and what you can't see in this chart is the specifics of where the square feet are located. Because as Mr. Smith was explaining, roofs, RTA broke them into sections.
Yeah.
So, you know, large buildings have multiple sections in them. So for example, Franklin could have, and I'm just building A, I should say, could have a section, a portion, that has a very low RCI, and another section that has a much higher RCI. So we can't just simply look at this and say, oh, we know the buildings that are all in that very poor or all in that poor range, because quite honestly, there's going to be several buildings that are going to have a piece, you know, a foot in both of those ratings kind of piece. So that's why we need to look at it a little bit more. But we definitely have some preliminary plans to start moving forward because, yes, we need to, the bottom line is, we need to replace a lot of roofs. There's, yeah, there's no question about that. We need to start replacing a lot of roofs. And also, in the meantime, doing some patching or fixing for some shorter-term fixes on some of them, to be sure. Hi, how you doing?
Good, how you doing? Hiding in the back over there.
Why, come on over and join the fun?
Throwing a couple of opinions.
Can I ask one more thing? There's, the first category is failed to very poor. Are those at all a safety risk for students?
I don't know if they would necessarily be a safety risk, but they may be a water hazard, you know, for the occupants of the building, which could be a slip and fall or something like that. So I'm sure the leaks that happen from time to time are probably dealt with by the maintenance staff for the most part.
Yeah.
And to a point, you can repair the leaks as they pop up, but when it becomes systemic, then it's really time to replace that area. Just a couple of things, big picture, which, you know, we talked about many months ago, but RTA is a roofing consulting firm that does nothing but roofs and building envelopes. They're in Livonia. I've worked with them for almost 20 years. We trust them implicitly. When I first see a report like this, part of me says, wow, okay, yeah, I need to replace the roof. I hire a roofing consultant, he tells me I need to replace the roof, and it's in terrible shape. So I try to take it with a little bit of grain of salt. The reality of it is, you know, we can only do what we have the money to do. But this helps us prioritize, you know, which roofs need to go first and which ones need to go second and third. The other thing is, as much as we'd like to replace an entire roof on the buildings that are in the worst shape, that doesn't mean we have to. If there are areas that are leaking that are causing slip and fall issues, or a lot of times, the gym floors are made of wood. If we've got a roof leak over a wood floor, that's going to ruin the floor versus over terrazzo or something like that, you know, those have a higher incidence of needing to be repaired. So we're going to try to be as realistic as we can with the money that we know we have to work with out of the sinking fund and try to be a little bit more thoughtful about which roofs get replaced. And it probably won't be, to start with, it won't be entire buildings, I don't think. The first year, if you remember the report we gave that Ms. Oakley alluded to, we had some critical repairs, I think, that we're looking at for the next year. And then we had hoped to do, I think, Emerson and Johnson and some of the other buildings that were in worse shape. But we may have to, in light of this, we may have to actually do more strategic repairs at different buildings, just to use the money we have wisely, so. And then, you know, if you look back at the next couple of charts, I noticed that the total numbers don't completely add up on each page. And part of that is because we asked them to look at it a few different ways. We asked them for, you know, what would be your plan to replace everything in five years? What would be your plan to replace it in 10? When you start doing that, you start putting escalation numbers on, which makes some of the numbers come out differently depending on how they ran it. You see, we had them run it three or four different ways. Another thing we talked a lot about is what is the real square foot cost? That can be a misleading number, because if you do an entire middle school that has 120,000 square feet and it only has two or three roof planes, you can get a pretty low number, probably closer to $10 a foot. But if it's really chopped up, like Grant, like Mr. Smith alluded to, it could be way more per square foot, especially if you start getting into the fascia and the coping, which turns into the soffit, which complicates the whole thing. So I think some of these numbers are conservative, which is good because it's a budget number. I would be hopeful that we could beat some of the numbers in the short term, maybe get closer to $12 or $13 a foot, something along those lines. But it's always good to budget a little bit on, a little bit on the higher end, so. But you can see, you know, there's some areas at Franklin, some at Transportation, a couple other areas that are really the most critical ones.
So from our perspective, we're going to use this information, as we stated earlier, to, you know, guide us in what we do, how we do it, when we do it, based upon the money and the time that we have. Because, you know, it's, you can't magically go out in one summer and replace the roofs in 2.6 million square feet, but we certainly can address issues as they come up and in the meantime, have a plan moving forward to either replace or repair items in the areas that we have.
Like we talked about, even if you could, you'd then put the burden on someone 20 years from now to then replace them all again at one time, which we don't want to do, so.
Any questions on this item? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. When they did the assessment on Churchill, did that include any of the work that's going on right now over the auditorium?
We sent them some aerials of the areas that were recently replaced, like the new auditoriums at the other high schools, the Churchill area that's going to be replaced. So we tried to keep them away from those areas. There are some adjacent areas that have been subject to some additional traffic from foot traffic, people up on the roof, to how do you tie the roofs together with the new roof versus the old roof? They'll probably have to be replaced in short order. I know there's some leaks over at Churchill. So we tried to keep them out of the new areas and really keep them focused on the existing roofs. And, you know, two, when they're up there, they're really looking hard at flashing details. I mean, the main body of the roof, other than the seams where the rubber laps over each other, that's pretty straightforward. It's really the flashing of where different things terminate, you know, are they caulked the right way? Are they embedded? Are they cut into the masonry with pressure bars and things like that? You have a lot of high standing seam mansard roofs, you know, if you think about like the middle schools, like Holmes and Frost. As those terminate at the top and at the bottom, it gets kind of complicated. Those are where you're going to have the leaks. So they looked at those areas as well. And then, obviously, they're up there cutting holes in the roof so that when we do design it, we know exactly what's there. Is there one roof, two roofs, how fix the insulation? What does the curb detail need to be when we do the next design? So they're pretty thorough. I was very happy with the data we got back, so.
And for the most part, our schools have two roofs on them, correct?
Yeah, most of them, buildings that are that vintage, they had an old built-up cold tar pitch roof, and then they usually have a, like, one layer of insulation with a membrane on top, which means we have to take all that off when we re-roof, so.
That's part of what's driving the higher number from them. I mean, if you were just adding a second layer of insulation and a membrane, those costs would be reduced, but we've already went through that years ago when these were put on in the early 2000s. One other thing, just to explain these three sheets. The first sheet, when you look at these weighted in, it has the cost, that's really doing everything, and that's using what they would call today's dollars. So that's the 39, 459. The second sheet is running it at a five-year program with costs that escalate over five years, so that's why it's roughly 42. And then the third sheet does the exact same thing, but it escalates it over a 10-year program, and that's why that cost is a little bit higher. So just to explain the three different sheets, the data's the same, but they're escalated differently over different periods of time.
Does everybody understand those?
Yeah, the thought is, work done down the road will cost more than work done now.
We'll probably make them rerun it three more ways before we...
And then what they've done is broken out the five-year program, what would be done in their first five, the second five.
Yeah, and these are just their recommendations. Something may change along the way if we have a bad winter or a good winter. You know, a lot of times, there's ice that slides down and damages areas that have to...
This is their take on it, as I was trying to say before. Some of it is what their take would be.
It's a little bit subjective, but...
Any other questions on this item? All right, and there's no action taken on this.
Right. Thank you.
We're glad to have this data. This is something that I think we had all decided when we first engaged with this company that this was, this was important work as part of, you know, when we went in December of 15 and did the long-term sinking fund review in depth. And certainly, as we began to put dollars down on each page, this was information we really needed to be able to ballpark and forecast over the next few years where we would need to go. So there's a lot of detail in this information, but it will be very helpful to our team moving forward.
Okay. We'll move on to C, Design Drawings for the 2013 bond. Watch out for the... I thought you were getting close to that screen, yeah.
Does that work for you guys?
Yeah, perfect.
And this presentation, we should have, we preloaded, so the folks at home should have it as we go through directly on their screens.
Nice to see you, Katie.
Good evening, Katie.
Thanks for being here.
All right, this is the PowerPoint, 2013 Bond Projects for the summer of 2018. And I'll just kind of turn it over. I know that Scott's going to run us through probably rather quickly the first load-up of slides, because really, it's just the rehash of 2014, 2015, 2016, all that kind of good stuff. And then when we get to the fun stuff, we'll let Katie take over, because then she can introduce the renderings, et cetera, okay?
Yep, she definitely gets the exciting part of this. But this is a, this is a program or a presentation we've been doing about this time for the last few years. We've got the same format, so I know not everybody's seen it, but we are being consistent, just kind of updating it for things that are current and then adding to what we've done in the past, which is getting to be a nice, long list of projects we've completed over the last four years. So again, our goals and objectives, we really covered these on the, as part of our quarterly dashboard report, so I won't restate them now. But again, we've got $195 million bond budget, and we're looking to improve the facilities here, which we've been doing for the last four years. This is the scope of how that 195 was originally allocated, with 30 million approximately for technology, 147 for facility improvements. We had some money in for new buses and maintenance equipment, as well as money for furniture, instructional equipment, and then some other closing soft cost type of things to round up to 195 million. As part of that, the information technology really focused on classroom technology, mobile learning devices, computers. We did stuff with wireless networks, network upgrades, new phone systems throughout. We recently replaced printers and copiers, servers and, servers and infrastructure, surveillance cameras are ongoing, technology cabling, and we've also been doing community rooms at each of the buildings. Facility improvements, and this goes back to how we've been very reasonably consistent throughout, and that's, you know, as Mr. Francis mentioned, we are meeting with each building, but to get the ball rolling, we really know where to start. We've got a consistent place to go back to and know where we should be starting with each of the renovations. So we've been replacing class, we've been putting teacher stations at each of the classrooms. That's a new projector drop, marker boards, tack boards. We've been replacing ceilings, flooring. We've been painting rooms, new lights, new unit ventilators in most of the rooms, power and lighting. We've been reconfiguring and securing the main office, or the main vestibules. In some cases, those have kind of taken on different looks throughout the buildings because that's, each building did have its own uniqueness there. Where needed, we've been replacing windows. We've gotten rid of a lot of single-pane windows throughout the district. New doors and hardware, at least in the, mostly in the corridors and in the main offices. We've been upgrading restrooms. We have not had the funds to upgrade every, attack every restroom throughout the district, but we've certainly been targeting certain ones, particularly around the main office, and making sure we had very free rooms in each of the schools. Heating and ventilation, again, most of that is replacing some rooftop equipment, but probably more importantly is replacing the unit ventilator systems in each of the classrooms, adding controls to each of the buildings so that those can be controlled remotely. That'll improve efficiencies. Power and lighting upgrades, fire alarms as needed. We have found some buildings haven't needed the investment in the fire alarm. They've been upgraded to the fully addressable systems in recent years. We've been adding emergency generators to each of the buildings, and then we've been abating the schools as well as needed, and that's really been very unique to each building. Some have required less and some have required quite a bit. In fact, a couple of schools this coming summer will need, will be heavy, and a couple will be rather light. We've replaced bus, added new buses. We spoke about furniture in the past. We bought some new musical instruments. And again, the closing costs, other costs, and the fees associated with those. What have we done so far? Well, we're in year five, so we've done quite a bit. We've sold both series of bonds, taken advantage of favorable interest rates. Way back in 2013, we hired Wecley Associates to do a book of standards, which kind of standardized what the district really wanted in terms of the various improvements. We assembled a bond team. You know, now that we're in year five, not all the folks are still active with some of this stuff. We've bolded the ones that are currently doing most of the work, which is French Associates, so we have Katie Matevskaya here with us tonight. Bart Mallow Technologies is handling a lot of the IT portion. The George Ott Company is our current construction manager. is handling a lot of the IT portion. The George Oak Company is our current construction manager. We have Celender Associates, who is performing all of the commissioning, which is the testing of a lot of the mechanical systems to ensure that they're functioning correctly. And Arch Environmental, who is our environmental consultant, who oversees a lot of the abatement work throughout the buildings. Going back, we assembled a lot of committees to help prioritize and understand the scope associated with each of the projects. We've been, had monthly committee meeting updates, award recommendation meetings, board updates to all of you, trying to keep everybody apprised of the progress of the bond and where we are, and any challenges that we may be seeing in our quarterly dashboard reports. I'm going to fly through these, but just as everybody's reminder, back in 2014, our first wave of bond projects included Cleveland, Coolidge, Rosedale Elementarys. We did Cooper Upper Elementary, Frost Middle School. We tackled the high school press boxes, and really IT, security access control, move management, associated with all of those projects. In 2015, we did Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt, our elementaries, Riley and Emerson. We started our first high school, Franklin, which was a two-summer project. We started the phase one of that. Again, corresponding information technology, security, and surveillance work, and move management with those projects. Last year, we, I'm sorry, in 2016, it was last year. In 2016, we did Grant, Hoover, Randolph, Johnson, and Holmes. So for the most part, we got through most of the elementaries. We finished up our upper and middle school levels. We finished Franklin, opened up the new Performing Arts Center, and we started and broke ground on Stevenson High School to undergo a similar renovation. And then in 2016, we kind of started some of the furniture implementation throughout the district, starting at the secondary level. Last year, we, or this, this year, we wrapped Stevenson High School and opened up that new Performing Arts Center, and correspondingly broke ground with Churchill High School in their phase. We went back and looked at Randolph, Frost, Cooper, and did some updates there at those schools. We recently started work at Garfield Community School. We've done abatement there as well. And then this past year, we did a little bit more furniture at the secondary, but also did a full implementation of elementary school furniture throughout all of the elementary and upper elementary schools. And that pretty much brings us to today for 2018. So this is where we're going to start presenting what's up and coming, and what we've been working on behind the scenes. So going back, we did, way back, we set up all these district-wide pre-purchase agreements with several vendors to capitalize or take advantage of some pricing that was locked in for years. And we're still continuing to see the benefits of that pricing. It's still active, it's still part of their contract, and it's something we continue, the district continues to receive the benefit of even into 2018. We did that with the fire alarm, unit ventilator, and temperature controls work. So we've, one, we standardized a vendor, which helps from a maintenance perspective. It helps the folks in facilities. We've done commissioning, and also security and access control. Again, we've been consistent with our vendors. They performed well, and we are continuing to coordinate with those folks in getting things lined up for next year. The items noted in blue are kind of, the first one is where we are to date. So you can see, we've been doing some, quite a bit. We've met, we've had what's called schematic design, which is our very conceptual, almost, in design. It's very early stages. We're now through what we would call design development, where the scope is defined. The drawings are pretty far along. We don't have every detail ironed out, and we don't have every I crossed and T dotted, but in general, the scope is the scope, and we just need to refine it, the details from here. We're going to be presenting those programs to you, and we'll go through it. We'll let you know where we are relative to budget. From there, we'll continue, even while we're doing this, Katie and her team is continuing to design a way. We'll be going out for bids, as I mentioned, early next year. We'll submit concurrently with the, to the state for their plan review. And then we'll be back here early next year for the board recommendations, and then we'll get things rolling. I'm going to turn everything over to Katie Matevskaya from French. She's going to talk, get through the projects and show you some of the slides and what we're doing, and give you some ideas of what it might look like.
First, I wanted to thank you, to all of you, and to Livonia Public Schools for having confidence in French Associates to continue working here. And we do like working Livonia Schools, because we have such a good collaboration with the staff, with all of you here, with, even with the principal. Everybody has been great on the team. So that helps us a lot, taking input from everybody and putting that into our design. So one of the schools that we're doing next year is Buchanan Elementary. And we'll start first with the entry features, and then we'll go to the plan, actually, what we're doing in the plan. I just wanted to mention that the only thing that we have not decided yet is the color finishes. But we have meetings with every school, sometimes the end of November. So you will see all the entry features done in blue color. That was kind of the easiest, so we don't distract each other. And then the colors will be chosen. We will change those images to the correct colors that come in. For Buchanan, there is not much play here around, that's my laser works.
The thing doesn't work on the TV. When you press the green button, just because it's a TV screen, you can't see it as well?
We don't have to. I mean, it's.
Oh, that one. I tried to do it as well.
Yeah, I wanted to give the laser, but it's.
Yeah, the laser's a very good idea.
That's okay. There is not much space up front at Buchanan. So the way that we designed it, we're just putting the arch up front, that's just about enough. And then the benches and the smaller piers come on the side. Talking to the principal and to the staff, they need all that area up front for students lining up. So we kept the existing totally as it is, and just pushed our benches and the lower piers on the side, so that gives them more space. That is, that's the way that this is designed. It doesn't have, some of the schools have four benches. This one could fit only three benches. So it's a little bit smaller. Now, if we go to the next slide, what it is, is Buchanan has been renovated, like, recently, not recently, but still most than any of the other elementary schools. So that's why there is less work at Buchanan than in the other elementary schools. Like, from looking at the exterior, all the windows have already been replaced. So we're not doing anything with the exterior. All the unit vents in the classrooms have been replaced, so there is no work there. The ceilings have been replaced, the lights have been replaced, so that is all there. Most of the flooring finishes, that has been done too. So we didn't do any of that. What we did is actually, if you look at the blue area, that is the front secure vestibule. What we did is the main office doesn't change. That has been upgraded too very recently. So that does not change. We're just putting an entry vestibule, going from the vestibule into the main office, and from there, going into the school. In order to do that, because the cafeteria, the gym, actually was connected to that entry. So we're putting a wall so that we can divide that space. So nobody from the secure entry can go into the gym, but from the gym, they can go into the, into the office. So there is still connection between the gym and the office, but when you go into the secure entry, you cannot just freely walk into the gymnasium, the cafeteria. That's why we are opening one exterior door to that kitchen entryway. So it is, so for the kitchen, anything that is brought to the kitchen comes from outside. You don't have to go through the secure entry. And also, that is a second exit from the gymnasium directly outside. The green areas below, those were four classrooms, that one of them, up to now, is an art classroom, music, and the other just normal classrooms. Those are being turned now into kindergarten rooms. To do that, we're replacing the flooring. So it is half carpet and half VCT, just like all the other kindergarten rooms. And we're adding hobbies. So those are completely kindergarten. Now, the music goes back in the front, that's the green area. And in there, we have to replace the ceiling to have tile that is appropriate for music, so it has different acoustical value, and carpet. And we have a second computer lab, that is the light green area. That was a classroom that is not used right now. So we're turning that one into a computer lab, just replacing, adding electrical power and data, what we need for the computers, and also replacing the flooring, because in all the computer labs, we have carpet, not VCT. The art room moves into that, the blue area, the light blue that you see, that is the new art room. We just have to change a few caseworks, so that is adaptable to the art program. All the other classrooms that you see in the yellow, the only thing that we're doing in the classrooms is we're putting teacher station, and the teaching wall gets new colors. So because right now, the classroom is just white, there is no accent color for the teaching wall. So we are painting only the teaching wall, but we are replacing the marker board, because right now, they have very small marker board, which is not per Livonia Public School standard. So we're putting bigger marker board and tack boards. So that's the only thing that we're doing in the classroom, because everything else has been done. Basically, that's all that we're doing at Buchanan. Are there any questions for Buchanan? Webster. Webster is a sister school to Coolidge. So if you've been, if you've been driving next to Coolidge, you can, you'll see this is completely very similar. The only thing, it is mirrored. Like, at Coolidge, the entryway was on the right side. Here is on the left side. Everything is just mirrored. But basically, it will look very same from the outside as Coolidge does. So we're going to have one canopy for the new secure vestibule, with a new archway in front of it. And then on the, on the side, on the back, would be the four benches. On the other side, we do have another canopy for the other entry. So that I'll, if we go here, like, on the left side, you see the canopy that is like, there is no color to it. We are doing the small vestibule, that is small entry vestibule. There is one difference between Coolidge and Webster, because the codes, at least how the state interprets the code, changed a little bit. So they decided that for a small entry vestibule, we don't have to have a firewall, which we had it at Coolidge. So the difference here is that we have more visibility, more glass from the entry vestibule into the office than we have at Coolidge. We did meet with the staff and worked on the layout of the office, and I believe that we're very, kind of, everybody is happy with the layout of the office. What do we do now? If you see all the bathrooms, I did forget, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to, the bathrooms that we are renovating at Buchanan are the ones that are in red. Those are completely renovated. At the other bathrooms, there are only, for some reason, the girls' bathrooms, the partitions were not replaced, only the boys were replaced. So we're replacing now the girls', because they are metal. I just say it's for some reason, they are metal, and they are very bad shape, so those are being replaced here. In the classrooms, Webster, we're doing complete renovation. The windows are being replaced, because they are the single-pane windows. The, we're getting new blinds, we're getting new unit vents. The unit vents are those, like, squares that you see in the middle of the room. Next to the unit vent below the window will be the open shelving, just like in the other schools. We're placing the flooring, all the classrooms are VCT flooring, except for the music room and the computer that they get carpet. The ceilings are replaced, new lights are replaced. We're getting a teaching wall with a different accent color, with a marker board and tack boards, and teaching station. So basically, completely renovating the spaces of the classrooms. All the corridor doors are being replaced with new wood doors, and we are painting all the frames, so the entire school gets painted. The corridors, also, we're replacing the VCT flooring. Some is old, so we're replacing the VCT flooring. And in, at the, all the entryways, we're putting wok of carpet that is much easier to clean and maintain at the entry. So you don't have to put any additional rugs when you, when you enter the school. The gymnasium is, if you've seen Coolidge, we are still opening, because this gymnasium has a laying ceiling right now. So we're going to remove the laying ceiling. We're going to paint everything, and we're going to replace the glass block. There are some panels there, so we're replacing with glass block. So there will be very nice natural light coming into the gymnasium, but still diffused, because it's a glass block. It's not, it's not a window. The upper classrooms, in the green that you see, those, that is the newer wing. I believe that was, I don't know if it was ninety, in the nineties, built. We're going to replace the windows, just because they are leaking, just like at Coolidge. So something with the detail didn't work as designed, so it's leaking. So we're replacing the windows. And also, casework in those classrooms is kind of falling apart, so we're going to replace most of the casework. In the other classrooms, we are not replacing the casework, just replacing the countertop, because the casework is in a very good shape. All the bathrooms that are with a light blue above the office, those are the bathrooms that are getting completely renovated with a new flooring, new wall tile, with an accent wall tile. The other bathrooms that you see, we're replacing the plumbing fixtures, because they are old. So the sinks and the water closets are being replaced, and partitions are being replaced, if they're the metal. The ones that are plastic, they're laminate, solid plastic, we're not replacing those. So that's been done there. The area that they have, like, a secondary gym, which is with a hatch, green hatch, we're going to put a partition in, but not, not a fixed partition, but only a movable, like a curtain, so that they can divide it and have two separate classes in there. And because that space is, it is on the exterior, but it doesn't have windows, and it's kind of, it would be much better to open windows. We're opening just punch windows, so that they can ventilate the space better than, than it's done right now. There are a lot of classrooms here that do have AC, just because of the program that is within those classrooms. And that's about all. We're painting the fascia outside, so you're going to have a completely, like, new look of. Any questions on Webster? Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
So you can go ahead and finish, Scott. Thank you.
No, the canopy, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The old canopy that is like, is it again? That's all of it? That's gone. That was not in the picture, so that's why I don't see.
No, 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 it wasn't my question, but that's good to know. So in the, in the picture on the front, it looks like you're adding a door going straight into the office. So are you going to have two entryways? Is there two doors now?
There is, the one is the existing door. That is the existing door to the left. The other one is the vestibule that we are adding. So from the vestibule, you go directly into the, I don't know if you can see if you can zoom up here.
You're going to have to go in that, not the left door.
So the doors, the doors to the left that are the current main entrance, is not going to be the main entrance.
But it's still going to be.
It's going to exist.
Yes.
So let's say in the evening, no one's in the office, because it's not working, you're having an evening event. You wouldn't want to send people through the secure vestibule, because there's no one to buzz them through. They could unlock the doors that are the current main doors, and come straight into the building for whatever the event might be. So those doors will exist, but they should not be the main doors. They should be locked during the day, and visitors should be heading through the vestibule.
With the exception of entry time.
Yeah, in the morning.
Like, at Coolidge, those doors on the side, so there's, there's the entrance that goes directly into the office, that's utilized once the doors are locked. directly into the office, that's utilized once the doors are locked and parents are coming in later, if they're coming in for an appointment. Otherwise, the set of main doors, similar, do you wanna go to the one before it? Please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Where you see those two people walking in that door. Those doors will still be accessible in the morning and for evening events and so on. But then, once those are locked at the start of the school day, everyone will be fed through a new set of doors that will go into a secure vestibule that will go into the office.
So on the purple, sorry, just, I'm just curious. So on the, on the next one, oh, there's a hallway here. This is, they're going in here.
Here's your door there, and there's your door there.
So they still go down the hall, they're not going through, they're not being fed through the office?
Correct. Yeah, the kids will come in this door and go down the hall.
Sorry.
Thank you. The next, the next one is the Career Technical Center. This, this one is, again, we don't have much space for the entry feature to work with. So that's why we could put only the arch in front of the main entry, the main entrance. And then along the existing columns behind, we thought that it would be nice that we can line up the benches and just replace that concrete from the main entry to, there's a landscaping island. So that, all that concrete there is, in its really bad shape, so it will be nice to replace the whole thing. So this thing, it worked out very nice. What do we do in the building? It was, we had quite a few meetings to see what we can do with the space, what to change, what not to change. We are doing, the blue is again the office. And we're doing a secure entry vestibule, just like at, at all the other schools. The office changes so that where the conference room now is, and then from there, you go into the principal's office. So that conference room, we are including into the main office area, so we can organize the space much better. And what is the work area right now becomes a new conference room. So that whole area is being a little bit changed. We did have discussions between the principal and the staff from the office and worked out all the details, where the mailboxes go, where the stations go. So that is kinda all pretty much worked out. In all the classrooms that you see, we are replacing the flooring. And now it depends, we're not putting exactly what is out there. Right now, most of them have carpet. But we discussed with the principal and with the staff which rooms would need to be VCT, which carpet, like the medical rooms, there is no reason to put carpet back when the purpose of the rooms, I mean, it's gonna be, they have, they would have to clean it better. So that's all discussed. We're replacing all the ceilings, all the lights, we're putting new unit vents. And a lot of them, most of, all of them are with air conditioning because that's just the...
There's not much window. If you've been in the Career Center, there's no interior windows in, in these rooms.
And not exterior windows too much.
Exterior.
Exterior windows, there are just very few windows. In those, like three or four maybe, and we're replacing those windows because they are hollow metal, they are not aluminum, and we have to replace those windows. Also, most of the doors, the exterior doors, are hollow metal. So we're replacing those, we're putting new aluminum frames with FRP doors, which is the standard. The red, did you see the red? Those are the, not the bathrooms that are getting replaced completely. The, yeah, and the blue, light blue, are the two bathrooms there next to the main office. Those are the one that we have, the, the main renovation, everything, flooring and wall tile replaced. All the other bathrooms that you see, there are some purple, there's some in red, they get all new plumbing fixtures, new sinks and new toilets because they are old. And we're reconfiguring the switching of the light fixtures because right now, all the bathrooms switch from someplace else. So when you go into the bathroom, you cannot, there is no switch. It's some other area. So it is a little bit, it's a little bit different. As for the corridors, the front main corridor is terrazzo existing, very nice shape. But for some reason, the back corridors were covered with carpet. There is terrazzo underneath, so we're gonna remove the carpet and just polish the terrazzo. So all the corridors will be terrazzo, which is the best flooring that you can have for corridors. The multipurpose room, that has been redone lately, so there is new ceiling and new lights. It looks very nice. What we'll do only is replace the carpet with a newer carpet. And if, you know that there is a fake overhead door, which is right now from the inside, it's closed and there is a screen, projection screen in that location. So we're removing that, we're gonna remove the fake door that doesn't work, doesn't exist, basically. And in that area, we're putting a window, we will infill that with glazing, so at least you have some light, natural light into that space. The student lounge, that is the green area, it has sink now and they would like to have a drinking fountain. So that's what we're putting in there. And then the, the teachers lounge has been, is been reworked because it has very old casework, so we're replacing the casework in the teacher lounge. And any, some of the classrooms, not too many, have casework, but it is very old, it's almost falling apart, so we're replacing that casework too. On the exterior, where that door, the fake door was, there is like, the, the metal panel is like alcove a little bit. So we're gonna replace just that portion and paint the whole metal panel. Because it is, it's right now, it's brown and it's spilling, so we're just gonna paint the whole thing. The shop area, the only work that we have at the shop area is that classroom, so we're gonna do some finishes in the classroom, everything else stays the same. And we're replacing some of the piping that goes into that, the canopy. So we have to, I have to redo the side of the canopy, the canopy for replacing piping that connects to the shop area. That's, any questions for?
No.
Shall I go back?
No, no, you're good.
Jackson Early Childhood Center. Jackson, again, just for the entry feature, it is very, very tight space. So the only thing that we could do is, and we did not want to encroach on the, the rest of the school because maybe sometime, you're gonna work on the pavement there and the parking and the floor, so we didn't wanna go into that area at all. So all we are doing is just putting the entry archway in front and it's centered on the entry. And then putting two benches and two small piers on the side, that, and replacing the concrete, that area. On the other side, I'm just gonna replace the concrete because it's in a bad shape with the color concrete, but it is the ramp there, so we cannot put a bench and anything else. So this one has the list of the entry features than any other schools, but just there's no place for it. If, now, we go with a floor plan. This school, this school has been, actually, there is not much renovation from what I could see done up to now, so it has, the windows are single pane windows, so we're replacing those. The, the sofas are also, they're asbestos. So those are being replaced and they are tied with the windows. That's like one element, if you move one, you have to replace the other one. All the, the classrooms, we are replacing the flooring, putting VCT flooring and carpet. We're mixing them half and half just because those are small kids. We are, some of the ceilings are, there are double ceilings there, there is one ceiling and then ceiling below that. So we have to replace the ceilings with new ceilings and new lights. The bathrooms are, we're not doing much with the bathrooms though, between the classrooms, but some of the bathrooms have urinals. And they don't need urinals, but they do need changing tables. So we're eliminating the urinal, replacing only the sink and the water closet, putting, it's just a floor drain where the urinal was and just putting a changing table for the babies. The main office, that's the blue area, is being reconfigured almost totally, but what they have right now is partition gypsum board walls. So it's, and they are not even going all the way to the ceiling, so it was very easy to reconfigure. And we did work out with the staff, so came to a, a plan design that they liked a lot. The gymnasium, we are actually, the, the east wall is, I don't know if you remember, it is like a metal panel wall. It, it used to be sometimes window, then it was put metal panel, and it is falling apart and has problem because it's leaking. So we're gonna remove that metal panel and it has, actually, there is block and brick up to, I believe it is about up to thirty-two inches, and then the panel is above. So we're gonna remove the panel and just break that up. So it's gonna be block and brick and we're just putting punched openings, so there is some light and ventilation into, into the gymnasium. The bathrooms that are being renovated are the two purple ones. They are right now gang bathrooms, but they, they didn't have bathrooms for adults. So those are turning into single bathrooms for adults, but they will have a changing table in there also. The staff, we are adding, they're, they were saying that they do not have enough staff bathroom, so we're adding the, the light blue one, that is a new bathroom that is in the space actually of the custodian. There is a storage space, so we're gonna use that just because there's, on the other side, it is a custodial closet, general closet, it has plumbing, so it was easy, it was the easiest place to put that bathroom there. And they were complaining that there is not much storage, so we're just adding a small, the, the green, the dark green area above, we're just adding a, just gypsum board partition to create a storage out of the lobby so that they can use that space a little bit more. Basically, that's all that we're doing here, so. The fire alarm is updated recently, so we're not doing anything with the fire alarm. We don't have teaching walls here, so we're not putting marker boards and tag boards, not in this location.
Any questions on the classroom?
So now we, those were the buildings that we were renovating. So here, it's only the entry archways. And here is Churchill, so you can see the new vestibule addition.
If you recall, there, the, that area actually currently has a built-up concrete area.
Which, which you can see on the side a little bit.
And it has the grass in there and whatnot. And that was one of the challenges, and Katie came up with the idea that, to go through it, not remove it, because if you remove it, then it becomes one giant concrete jungle. But to leave, you know, go through and rebuild the walls on the side and have two flanking green spaces.
Oh, that's nice.
And what it does is, coming in from the parking lot, it now really designates walk here. You know, this is where the, the, here vestibule is, and as, as we recall, the rounded front area was always the main entrance of Churchill, which is now gonna be the PAC entrance. This really delineates the two. And people, as they come in, even if it's their first time ever, you know, which way would you go to? You'd go where the Churchill arch is.
Are we thinking about putting any signage on that circular area to designate that?
Yes.
That's the auditorium.
Yeah, but the others, just the letters Performing Arts Center.
Okay.
But I didn't wanna put it in at this point because we haven't decided exactly what it's gonna be. I just removed the signage, main entrance, Churchill main entrance. But this will have the most small piers and benches because it is a long walkway to come to, to the vestibule. So, but it does look good. And then I, we did put in the, the new auditorium fly loft, so you can see it. And I don't know if you've been by Churchill, but they're putting right now the metal panels and it looks very nice and clean, so it looks beautiful.
That's great.
Just a quick note here, before everybody gets confused, it was, this was, go forward, go forward. This, this was a, not, this is not the name. It was a mistake, and by the time it was caught, the people who did the rendering, it was, it was difficult to get it changed. So it is not being called this, we all know this is Garfield Community School. And that's what will be on the arch. So we apologize for anyone at home and anyone who's confused, this is nothing more than a typographical mix-up.
And once I, we revise it with the correct colors, that name will be revised too at the same time. At Garfield, again, this school was, it has also tight space. So the only thing we could do is put the arch in front of the main entrance, so centered on the main entrance. But diagonally, if you can see, we can put small piers with two benches and on the side. So you, we still have the four piers, the four benches, but just in a, in a different layout. And right now, they do have bollards that are kinda concrete, and the lights are not working, so we're gonna remove those, so they are not, so only our new lights will This is, again, it's not gonna be Nijieiro, but Nijieiro Elementary, and I do apologize, but then we're gonna change that again with everything else. This one is, I think, the tightest one in front of the main entry at, there was, there is no room to put the entry archway. The only way that we could have done it is we kinda cut that canopy, but that's too much work and it does, it's not worth it. So we're putting, putting the, and it's a very nice green area, very nice walk, so we're putting the edge, entry archway in front of the, those are the existing flagpoles that, that are right there. And then, next to the existing columns, we're just gonna put two piers and two benches, so you still have a feel that that's a new entry, although it is not directly in front of, in front of the entrance.
Is it sidewalk there?
There is a sidewalk. Yeah, this is existing sidewalk.
For walkers, that's what they used to, to come through, anyone who may.
And it's, it's very, in a very good shape though, the sidewalk is in a good shape.
And we're gonna add to Nijieiro Elementary, which we don't have at the other schools. But to clarify, because Nijieiro isn't a, it doesn't follow our typical pattern of naming our elementary schools. So this particular school will say Nijieiro Elementary, where the others don't, but they're more established in, in that area. And so, just to be clear, that we know we still have further discussion to have with regard to renovations, et cetera, but again, while we're packaging all of the entryways, it's much more cost-effective to do all of, all of these now for any of the, the schools and facilities that are, are part of LPS, because that is, again, a big part of our branding, and we'd like to finish that up this summer for anywhere where that will be.
Speaking of that, next slide.
And this is the last slide that, that I have, that is the administration building. So when we looked at this, you have the main entry, but then you also have the entry to the boardroom down here. So we thought that it would be a nice idea to put the entry archway at the main entry with the two piers up front, the small one with, with the benches, and then some landscaping area, because the landscape that you have next to the building is beautiful. So we thought we could repeat it here, I mean, so. And then, but at the boardroom, just to put the two small piers with the lights and two benches, so the whole front, you can see the whole front, that there is a change in Basically, that's what it is. Yes.
Yes.
I just have one thought, and maybe it's pertinent, maybe it's not. If we're really highlighting the entrance on the south side, maybe on the glass or something, we can indicate the boardroom entrance.
Oh, on the upper.
You know, I, just...
Little sign or something.
Yeah, because I think maybe people naturally go to the left, but if they're coming for a board meeting, just a thought.
No, it's, it's a great idea.
It's a great idea. School board members enter here.
Beware.
The Dan Center's boardroom.
No, we, we can put that in, it's a great idea, so it should be there.
Okay, the center is boardroom.
Decent.
Well, this seems decent.
It's a little bit.
Decent.
It is decent, you're right.
Any questions so far? Any questions?
Wonderful.
Thank you, Katie.
A lot of work behind this.
Oh, yeah.
It's a big summer ahead. It's gonna look good, though.
Yeah, the renderings, renderings are great, I think helps us get excited about what's up, up.
Absolutely.
up, up, upcoming.
Churchill's amazing.
Churchill, yeah, it will look completely different once down.
Yep, it's beautiful.
So that's kind of the, the, the scope of the work and, and how we expect it to look from a, a rendering perspective. Um, this last slide here, um, really takes us kind of, and it orientates us to the budget. We've, uh, we're through the design development. So again, these aren't, these aren't bid out pricing by any means. It's, uh, it's, uh, George Ox's estimate. Um, we have a current budget of roughly ten point eight million dollars, uh, for all four facilities. And we're collectively looking, tracking about a half million dollars over. Um, as you can see, uh, that, that's collectively Buchanan, you know, we're, we're, we're right at budget. Webster, we're trending a little over. Um, and we, we think there's a lot of truth to that. Um, again, the pricing continues to, to look back. We look back at Coolidge Elementary, you know, being similar, but understanding it was a few years ago. Um, you know, we can see that where that three point two may not have held. Um, we're seeing some efficiencies at the Career Technical Center. Again, it's a, it's, we're not, we're not doing all fifty thousand square feet. We're probably closer to forty thousand because we're just not hitting the, the shop areas.
The two large areas.
Um, that school has a little bit more mechanically than I would say others. Um, but again, other than that, it's, it's very typical, but we expect to be, to see some savings relative to budget there, which will help us offset, um, some of the overages we're expect, anticipating at Jackson Early Childhood Center. Um, as Katie mentioned, that, that building, it's been a while since a lot of things have, have been done there. And to continue to do the same sort of scope there, uh, that we've done throughout, um, it's going to, it's going to take a little bit more to get that done. Um, there's some more mechanical in terms of piping. Um, I think our biggest opportunities at that school is to get good bid coverage in the mechanical electrical. Uh, if you remember when we did, uh, Garfield, our, our DD estimates, you know, showed us being quite a bit over there. Um, we've got great coverage there. We picked all that back up and we got right back on budget. So again, these are estimates. It really takes a couple of good bids here and there to really wipe a lot of this out. But in general, we're tracking okay. Um, this is based on including an eight percent contingency for construction, which is, uh, what we've been typically taking to the board once, uh, once bids have been bought out. Um, so we're continuing to look for, you know, ideas and ways to save money. We're, we're trying to identify alternates of things that, um, maybe don't necessarily need to happen with this if, if budget becomes an issue with the buyout. Um, so we're exploring those things and, and trying to do our due diligence as a, as a bond team.
Questions? Uh, yes, one still question.
Sound a question, may I still?
Yeah.
Mother may.
So I just wanted to spend a few minutes with the board talking about Jackson in particular. And you can keep this slide on. Um, there's, we've certainly had, um, an extensive amount of discussion over the past few years from when the original, um, bond scope was determined, um, prior to, um, going out for the bond. And then again, clarifying that shortly after the bond was passed. Um, the, Jackson is a good example of a school that had a little different use at that point in time. And initially, the original budget was about one point seven million dollars, which we augmented last year by about three quarters of a million to be, um, closer to that, um, two point five, two point seven range. As you know, um, since the time that the bond was passed, the ECP program, our early childhood program, um, which we service, you know, starting, students starting at, um, two years, nine months, um, up until the time that they go to kindergarten. Um, we've added all of those classrooms from the parent, from Perrinville School, um, into Jackson Early Childhood Center. Additionally, we have our childcare program and we have our preschool program. So as we take a look at that school, in, in addition to the fact that the programming has changed, um, as you've heard a couple of times this evening, this is also one of those schools that over time did not receive those, those updates that we had done at the other schools along the way. Because at that point in time, it did not house part of our pre-K post-secondary program with regard to our core educational program. It was an important program, provided outstanding service in preschool and in childcare to families. But again, those are optional services that the district chooses to provide. Um, since that time, we've added programs that are part of our pre-K post-secondary. And so we've really changed the use of that school. Um, therefore, the scope has, has been modified a bit. In addition to, we are now at, at the end portion of our work where some of our costs have increased, um, on top of some of the needs of renovating, um, portions of that school that have just not been, been touched at all. Additionally, um, as you know, we've also had quite a bit of discussion, um, whether it's through committee work or, um, as we've moved programs and as we've looked at needs and as we've looked at important trends in education, we know that, uh, early childhood education is an essential component of, um, the core of, and the core of the foundation of, of really, um, an equality school district. And we believe that we've provided that service, um, through Jackson Early Childhood Center, both for Gen Ed students and now also for students that receive, um, services for special needs as well. Um, at some point in time, we hope to be able to continue the discussion that many folks in our district have had and asked us to have with regard to creating a more state-of-the-art early childhood center as a, as a possible future, um, large-scale project for our district. Um, whether or not Jackson Early Childhood Center in the, in the far, farther future would continue to be that place, or whether we would perhaps expand those programs into another location, um, was something that we began to discuss as we took a look at the work that was being done here. Um, what we do see is a use for that school moving forward. So whether that continues to be the exact programs that we have there now, or whether or not that may be expanded to other locations within our school district as we look at future sinking fund work, or perhaps even in the long-term future bond work, um, is really still discussion to be had. Um, but one thing we do see is, is a future for the use of that school. Um, and so that is an important point as we take a look at this, because we really did want to, um, make that determination now, whether or not we would bring to the board very, just a very minor facelift, so to speak, um, with, with further discussion about, about use in years to come, or whether or not it made sense to make renovations that were more along the lines of, of our other schools, which was not initially the plan for Jackson. Um, and so we certainly have added scope, um, to that design. A lot of that is based in necessity, not only, um, from our folks, like our architect team and our, and our owner's, um, rep team, but also from within our own operations and maintenance, um, experts, um, who have really weighed in on, on Jackson as well and see some pretty significant need that exists there. So I just want us to maybe spend a moment having that conversation and be sure that the board is comfortable with us moving forward in that direction, um, knowing that, again, we may explore in the future different options. Um, but we, we certainly would still see use for that school, um, within Livonia Public Schools. So I just, I want to make sure we have that, that discussion with you and, and one that our community can hear as well.
Questions on that? Mr. Centers.
So, uh, just a comment. I, I think what you said about there being a desire for a large early childhood program is accurate. I've heard it as well. Um, but that's, it's many years away. And this is the first exposure of many of our families to Livonia Public Schools. And I think we want it to be a, a positive one. Um, and I think we're not doing anything above and beyond the scope that we're doing other places. It's really just bringing it up to a, a, a standard that I think would be, uh, very useful for the, the teachers and the students and just a comfortable environment. So I, I personally feel like this is smart, regardless of what direction we go several years from now.
Other questions or comments? President Burton.
As long as we are going to be utilizing this building, then I am one hundred percent in favor of making these, these renovations to the building. Um, I'm one of the ones that went to Jackson when I was a kid. And I've been in the building recently and I recognize exactly the same PA system. I'm not kidding. Exactly the same finishes, exactly the same. Look, I'd like to say I'm twenty-nine, but I'm not. That building hasn't been touched in many decades. Um, our, our littlest learners are just as important as our oldest learners. Um, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of putting the bond dollars into that building as long as we're looking at long-term use of that building, which I believe that we are. Uh, if someday we were able to utilize, uh, a larger facility, uh, for early childhood, we've also heard a lot of other requests that keep coming to us for magnet elementary schools, uh, and so forth, for, for our elementary program. This building is smack dab in the middle of our school district. Um, it's, it's as conveniently located as it can be for the citizens who live in our district. Um, I, I believe that we are going to continue using this building. And with that information, I am absolutely in favor of, of bringing this building up to speed. It is in dire need of it.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I agree with what you're saying. And because this building is currently being used in, in the future, the potential use of this building is obvious. Supporting it this way seems clear. Um, it makes the other buildings, our non-classroom buildings, a little more conspicuous in their absence, um, to it, Dickinson, Perrinville, Marshall. So not having those, have something done to them is almost like a kiss of death. And we need to consider what we want to do with buildings that are aging, but not necessarily being used for classroom purposes.
Mrs. Burton.
I respectfully disagree in that I, we, we do have limited resources. And I definitely want those resources utilized for where we have our LPS students. If we had unlimited resources, then absolutely, we, we could, we could take a few of those other facilities. But right now, if those facilities are, are useful and, and being used, and for example, Marshall Building is, is being leased out to, to other folks, I don't feel the compelling need to put an average of three million dollars per building into a building that we're, we're leasing out right now. Um, if we had unlimited funds, that might be a different story. But we, you know, even with the hundred ninety-five million dollar bond, our initial list of things that we needed, not even things that we just wanted, but things we needed, was two hundred and seventy million. So even with this one ninety-five, um, I, you know, we're not taking care of all of our needs, which are just our most, our most urgent needs. Um, I'm, I'm com- very comfortable putting our bond dollars into these buildings and still not putting bond dollars into, uh, Marshall Dickinson Perrinville. Um, that doesn't, to me, that doesn't say what decisions will or would not be made about those buildings in the future. This is just a decision with the bond dollars that we have to work with under this bond at this time.
I'm not suggesting using bond dollar, dollars. I'm just being noisy because I don't want these buildings forgotten. They weren't listed on the roof list either. Um, so I want to make sure they're not forgotten.
Mrs. Burton.
Um, I also agree that our littlest learners are so important and so vital. And I've, just talking with some of the staff at Jackson Center, how much of a demand there is for that program. I think that is phenomenal. And catching these kids early and with the third grade reading, um, bill that's coming through. I mean, I just think there's so many great things that can happen at Jackson Center, um, or with, with, with that program. But I do want to make sure that we are going to commit to utilizing that building, that it's not, we're not going to spend this significant amount of money and then not have a purpose for it if we do do something state-of-the-art. If we, so I just want that to kind of, I, I know Dee said we, we had that thought that we will utilize that building, but just to have a, these are some options for us to use. Because I think, um, putting that money in there, we, you know, just like we talked about with Cass and with Garfield, before we closed them, we wanted to make sure we were going to use them. And so I just think that we need to be so mindful of that, not spending money unless we know for sure we're going to be using them for long-term use for this type of purpose, because we're changing bathrooms, we're changing things for, for preschool kids. Um, so that's just what I want to be mindful of. And I appreciate the discussion, just to be able to say this, that we are, we are thinking about this before we go ahead. And so I think that that's a great conversation to have. That's my two cents.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Anything else to, to add, Mrs. Hopeless?
That's helpful. So really, at this point in time, what we look for from the board, um, we're at the design development stage. And now we'd like to move forward with, with final designs, um, and to prepare, um, bids to go out on the street. So this is the point in time where, where you say to us, yes, we're on the right track, or no, you're not on the right track, and this is where you need to make adjustments. So really, um, it's not a formal vote. It, as you know, we've gone through this process. But when we're at the DD stage, what we're saying is, um, this is, this is the plan, and this is where we'd like to go forward. Again, the budget you see are simply estimates. No bids, you know, we haven't gone out for any bids. We haven't been able to, to take a look at those. So generally, they're pretty conservative. Um, and they may come in, um, you know, hopefully a bit better than this. Um, but this is generally the direction we would be going. And what we're looking from you, from you is to say, yes, you're on the right track, or, or no, we'd like you to go back to the drawing board on, on one or more of these projects.
Sounds to me like we have a pretty good consensus to, we're moving in the right direction on this. Am I accurate on that?
Yes.
Sounds like it. So.
Thank you.
I, I think we're, we're going down the right path, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the work is beautiful.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, yes, yes.
Isn't it amazing when you see what's been done?
Yeah.
And then you think about this summer. I mean, wow.
I just, I just think of.
It's going to be great.
When we pass the bond, we're.
Yeah.
Four years down the road already, and look what we've accomplished through this.
It's great.
I was just going to say, Karen and I's first term, first time to go through it from this piece of, uh, starting.
Yeah.
We've kind of come in on the other side.
It's amazing to see all the work that has gone before.
Yes, it, it's fun to see the drawings and, and just what you guys are doing. It's amazing work, so.
All right. Okay, are we finished with, uh, C?
Well, we have, I think we just want to hit a, a couple pieces. There's not one real slide left. And it's just giving you a general timeline of what's, what to expect.
Uh, one other quick thing on, on Jackson, too. You know, as we renovate that, part of the design is to put air conditioning in all the rooms. It's something that's unique to that building. So that, that, again, as we think down the future, that's something that building will have that not every classroom in the district has. So if that's something that ends up being beneficial to a program or, or whatnot, we would have that.
And that's related to the guidelines, certainly, for the programs that we have there.
Um, this is really the for, the schedule looking forward. So today, we're at the, the board presentation to present the DD. Um, again, we, we'll be looking to complete drawings before Christmas, um, bid out shortly afterwards. Um, the plan really is to come to you on, on that February fifth, um, uh, committee meeting and, and present the bids. Uh, one thing I will point out, there, there's a lot of work that is going to be bid out. And that is a lot of post-bid interviews that have to occur from, we have a set period of time where we have to be on the streets out for bids as part of that public, uh, as part of that requirements from the state. Um, depending on how that goes and as we get through that, a couple of things could happen. One, we could be into March, we could push that out into March. Or we could also look to maybe award, bring to you like a, a consolidated package at the beginning and get, get some of the critical trades, the mechanical, electrical, the guys that have long lead items or are the first guys in. Get those presented and, and recommended to you. Um, we would still probably have a good feel for where the dollars shake out. We wouldn't have the exact number. Uh, we may push some of the entryway stuff, uh, following. The goal, of course, would be to try and hit that two-five and, and try to do it in one full sales, full sale swoop. Um, I'm just being honest, though, that there, each of these schools could have a completely different list of people. And if you multiply that number of schools times twenty-five different people, um, it's just a short window. And we want to make sure we do our due diligence to get the right people on. And that will avoid problems down the road, too. Um, so we're looking at February and potentially March to, uh, complete the awards. And we'll bring some of the other, uh, security vendors, the commissioning folks, um, all those, uh, at that time, too. Uh, then we'll get into the spring, we'll be out, we'll kind of, it'll be kind of quiet in terms of what you see, but people are behind the scenes working, getting, uh, submittals going, getting contracts going, getting things ordered, um, so that when the summer hits and we're ready. If we can do some work, second shift, uh, that's not disruptive to the learning environments, we will look to do that, too. Um, Jackson has its own set of challenges, right? We have a program that in some cases runs year round. Um, so there's a logistical piece to that that, uh, has to be thought through. Um, but again, most of that work would occur over the summer. And we turn the reins back over, uh, for, uh, start of fall.
I just wanted to add also that we're going to go for a plan review in December for the next year, just because the state has not decided yet whether they will implement storm shelter for next year. And that will add a lot of money to the projects. We, that has been delayed till the end of next year, till the end of this year. So that's when we're going to go for a plan review, because everything that goes into the state before January is without the storm shelter requirement. And that's a lot of money.
It's significant, if, if that.
Okay, there you go.
You have to have, it's significant dollars.
That is significant.
Significant dollars.
Wow.
Mr. Centers.
Along those lines, could you just kind of describe?
Along those lines, could you just kind of describe what that entails?
Yeah, there's still a lot of discussion, and there was a halting of that legislation, but essentially, and again, I will not profess to be an expert, but in general, what they're saying is, you need to have a storm shelter location that can house or is equipped to house all of the individuals in that facility at any given time during an emergency situation, and then there are certain requirements for that shelter itself. So in general, that may be a lower-level area of a school that either is utilized for other purposes or would need to be created, or another area reconfigured. It is, initially was supposed to be, it's supposed to be put in place for this fall.
Yes, it was.
And many, many districts had already gone through the process we've gone through, for instance, designed schools, and it was adding anywhere from hundreds of thousands of dollars to a million or two additional dollars per school renovation in order to meet the tenants of this legislation. So at this point, there's been a pause until the end of the calendar year. Hopefully, that will work us through all of our five years of renovations, and so it would only then, as we move forward into any new projects. But it would be a significant undertaking for us if we were to have to modify all of these schools for next summer with that new legislation, so.
We'll work fast.
Questions? Scott, I had a question. If we have to move the presentation back into March, does that move the construction schedule back a month as well?
The construction would still start when we, as soon as we can. It just gives us more time to get prepared, get things issued. There's a lot of administration that gets lost because it's not visible, and we would really want all the time we can to get going and ordering some of these long-lead components. Not everybody, you know, just because you give them a contract, not everybody says, oh, good, I'll get started on that. They tend to sometimes need coercing, but the more time, the better is the long and short of it.
Yeah, I think that was the point of it, maybe doing it in two waves. The early on subcontractors or items that we would need to get the ball rolling, we could bring first, so the team could be doing their post-bid interviews, focus those post-bid interviews on the more, what was my first, just the more urgent types of bids, and then get it rolling, and then bring in a second wave that might roll into March, I think is what you were trying to.
Yeah, if we could get the mechanical, electrical on board, I mean, these are going to be the big dollar players, too.
In short, it shouldn't delay it. In short, it shouldn't delay it.
No, no, no.
You said that.
Okay. Okay.
The other part of that is, you guys know that this is our top priority, so that for some reason, we need to schedule an extra meeting or change our meeting schedule. I'm speaking for all of us, I guess.
You're absolutely right.
You know, I mean, it's, if we have to change the meeting schedule in order to make this happen on a timely basis, because we're running behind schedule, or they just can't get everybody's interview in, or whatever needs to be done, we are absolutely on board.
Thank you.
With making whatever accommodations we need to make.
We worked to not do that, but thank you for offering it.
But still, I mean, there's only so much that you guys can do, and this is a lot. And so, you know, for the little bit of time or extra effort that it takes us is much less than it takes you guys, and there's no, you know, we absolutely don't want to delay anything, because, you know, there's not a meeting for another couple of weeks or something. We can absolutely make those accommodate.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Mrs. Jarvis, did you have something?
Well, you know, this is probably, doesn't fit in with this particular job as it is, but on the career and technical center, has there been anything to address the lighting for the kids who are walking in there in the morning? Last week, it was so dark in the morning, you couldn't see the kids walking in, and they cross the street from Churchill, walk along the sidewalk in the dark. Not one of them had a reflector or light clothes or any, you know, these are high school kids, they're too cool for that. So it's a serious safety issue. You simply cannot see the children walking in the mornings in the winter. So there are some lights there, it's not sufficient.
We can take a look at it. There's certainly a very long stretch between Newburgh Road and where the school is set in, and there isn't power at the road other than that street light, obviously. But we can, I'll talk to the team, and we can do a little investigating.
Yeah, thanks, good question. Let's take a look at it.
I drive that every morning, and it's really scary.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Oh, good. Now we can move on to Dee.
Thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Katie. Appreciate it.
Dee is the foresight design for the athletic field projects, and this was mentioned earlier in the evening when, I think we were doing the quarterly dashboard, Mr. Smith had brought it up with regard to the engagement of foresight in the design and engineering of the athletic field for Churchill, actually, which would be the summer 2018 project. It's a sinking fund project that we are looking to move forward with, and what we're bringing today is not the specifics of the project itself, but rather simply bringing foresight design to the board as a professional service of design and engineering of fields, right? And this is a group that is very prominent in this field. They've done many, if not most, in the districts in the neighboring areas, in fact, has worked with Lumonia Public Schools in the past. So we're looking to bring them in in a lump sum fee, lump sum fee for the design work at Churchill. That's the one project at $54,000. That dollar amount is derived from their fee of 4.5% and an estimated cost of $1.2 million for the Churchill project. And if you want to take a look at what some of the scope of the Churchill project would be, that would, if you flip in your binder, you see a letter from foresight with regard to that first page of scope and the first column of the three high schools. Churchill has the synthetic turf, the shock pad, the track structural spray, the coating, and the baseball field infield. All that comes to about $924,000 and some change. And then on the next page, we actually had a menu of items with just about everything that you could see at the athletic field, and we are not doing all of that, but we are picking out a few of the items. For example, we are looking at not necessarily new dugouts, but refreshing the dugouts that we have. We're looking at things like, you know, we're going to probably need some drainage or some irrigation work at the baseball field. We want to look at the softball field, probably spend around $100,000 on the softball field for our girls' softball team. That would include anywhere from some drainage, irrigation, and infield materials to perhaps some updating dugouts as well. And then around the stadium, we're looking at some fencing, and there's always going to be some asphalt work here. You're going to just have some currently broken up or will get broken up asphalt. So we have a budget with some contingency in there at 1.2, so that's where we're looking at foresight doing the design for the $54,000.
So let me just make note, before you go too far into studying the October 27th memo to Paul from foresight, again, the numbers that you see here are their estimates, and number two, we are not necessarily doing all of the components listed even on that front page, specifically things like the tennis courts and so on. We have a different plan to move forward with that for the other two schools. So I don't, you'd assume that the numbers that you see on here, this presentation tonight is only to engage foresight to begin planning the work. They will work closely with us with regard to the menu that you see attached. We will come back to you before we make any determinations on specific projects that will be done. Mr. Francis gave you the general overview of the items that we would be covering, so we would be talking about the field, the track, some fencing around that area, perhaps some handrails and things in the bleachers, and then looking at the baseball and softball field. So we will bring back at a different meeting the specifics to that. So what you see is what we were given initially. From here, we will then begin to determine the final scope, but that's what they're being engaged to do.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear with that.
So this was a cursory view, but, so I don't need to look at these numbers and assume that we're doing all of these things or moving forward, but we asked for literally a menu of items, so we would know what each piece would entail, so then we could put together a package along with Plant, Murray, and Cressa and the folks from foresight.
And if you notice, I mean, I'm not even looking or talking about Franklin or Stevenson. We are talking about foresight doing design for the summer of 18 for Churchill. When I was talking and mentioning items, I'm not even, you know, we're, there's more information here than is needed at this time in these letters.
So along that same line, when we go and start talking about Franklin and Stevenson, are we going to be looking at a similar fee from?
They base it on a percentage. So if you look at their original letter, they have a 4.5%. Correct.
Okay, so when we look at Stevens.
But we're engaging them, what we're bringing to you is the lump sum of $54,000, and that's what I would like to recommend at next week at the board meeting. We want to write it up as a, we are going to say a lump sum of $54,000 to do the design work for Churchill, and be having that clear and clean for the cap sheet.
All right, I just wanted to be sure that we're just talking about one fee for this one, and we would be looking at similar fees for the other two when we get to that point.
When we get to that point.
And just to be clear, there's a bunch of different ways to do architectural fees. You can do a fixed fee upfront, you could do a percentage at DD at the estimate, you could do a percentage of the actual bids that come in. To be honest, their fee was so aggressively good that I wanted to lock it in right now. Part of the reason it's so low, I expected it to be at least a percentage point higher, but part of the reason it's so low is they actually designed the athletic fields under TMP 20 years ago or 15 years ago when the turf was put in, so they have drawings, they have a lot of the legwork already done. They have that institutional knowledge that is helping them be aggressive on their pricing, so.
Mrs. Frank.
What I'm confused by is when they're saying 4.5 of 1.2 million, but we're not sure that's a 1.2, because we're not sure what the scope is.
It could be a little bit, it could be a little bit more, it could be a little bit less.
But they're still taking that 1.2 as what they're basing their fee off of.
That's my, that's our recommendation. We could leave it floating until we actually know, you know, know what the DD estimate cost is or what the actual bid costs are. I usually don't think it's a great idea to do that to an architect, because it's hard for them to plan, okay, I've got this many hours to do this job, but at the very end, I might take a haircut because the bids came in $200,000 or less, or I might make more money because they came in higher. We would rather have them focused on designing the project the right way and not be worried about how the bids are going to come in on bid day, so. And I think 1.2 is a realistic budget. We've went round and round on this budget for a couple of months of, you know, originally, someone asked me, how much does it cost to replace the turf? And I said, about half a million dollars. And then I said, but when we go out there and start walking around, you're going to see fencing, bleachers, paths, baseball fields, you're going to see all these other things that we want to do, and that's exactly what happened, is, you know, you start to see things that just don't look as good as you'd like. The project starts to grow, so we're trying to put a lid on it, too, and not let it keep going and going and going. So we thought 1.2, after all the different things we saw and looked at, that that was a reasonable budget to stick to.
And to take those who have been following the board meetings, and we've had these discussions in the past, we're not doing this because we want them to look pretty. We do want them to look pretty, don't get me wrong, but the fields are at end of life. It's time to do the football fields, and then when you take a look at the surrounding track, it's time to give at least the tracks the spray, and when you look at the fields, baseball or softball fields, and the baseball fields currently have the turf on the infield, those were done when the football fields were done. So we've had tests done this past school year. The fields are still within the range of safe, but the company said you're going to need to get these changed out, because they are at the levels where we're at the point where we need to change them. These have outlived, quite frankly, the projected life that we had even hoped for, so.
And to be honest, you could spend three, four, five million dollars in each high school on the athletic facilities without blinking an eye, but we're just not in a position to do that or to recommend that.
Any other questions?
I just want to follow up to Mrs. Frank. So we, so while we haven't made a final recommendation, we have certainly gone through this, I think, on four different occasions. And what we've done is we've said, these are the pieces that are an absolute must, based on either the impact testing that we had done, surveying the conditions of the tracks where we have some sink areas and so on. We know the areas that are the have-to-dos, and really, that's where we're basing this number from. There are certainly some areas that would probably put us, you know, anywhere from $3,000 to $500,000 higher, but we've really tried to look at this being the area where we'd like to, where we'd like to land. Now, that may mean swapping out a four-foot fence here to be able to do handrails here, so we don't anticipate coming back and saying to you it's going to be $1.9 million. We anticipate we'll be in this, in this area for Churchill in particular. As you know, for instance, we did the tennis court, so we don't need to go back there. There are some very specific needs with their track that we know need to be done, which is part of the reason why we're looking at that school first, in addition to the fact that Churchill will be under construction next year. And so one of the things we took a look at is, rather than tackling all three fields in one year, to be able to start with one school and then the following year do the other two. We will be there, we'll have folks on-site for construction to finish that up, and then once that school is, once we're done next summer, everything should be done there, in which case, you know, we'll get back to Stevenson and Franklin the following year. So we generally have a very good idea, but without foresight coming through and doing the specific design work, we want to give you that range. We certainly could bring a letter next week that said 4.5% of the total, but we like to be able to bring the board an amount that they're voting on, so hopefully that provides a little bit more clarity.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Yep, to that point, too, there is, you know, there's tennis courts at Franklin and Stevenson that we could be talking about ripping out and replacing in next year, that we're not, we're looking at doing something smaller term, you know, crack filling and maybe repainting the tracks. We had talked at one time, do we need to rip the entire track out, not just the surface, but the asphalt underneath, and expand them to eight lanes and do a bunch of other things that probably wouldn't be prudent, things that you'd want to do, but things that we probably just don't have the funding to do right now. So we're trying to use the dollars we have as judiciously as possible, so.
President Burden.
One thing I asked about in the study session, if you folks would address, I'm not sure which one of you wants to jump in with this one, but I know I've been asked, why are we going turf versus grass? Is it a safety issue? Is it a cost issue? Is it some of both? So just if you would publicly address that. I mean, I've talked to some extent, but you folks are far more.
I mean, I'll throw one piece out, is that we've already got the basic structure for turf, to tear that out and to go back to grass. One, you don't get the usability and playability, because you're going to have a soccer game on, or a football game on Friday night and a soccer game on Saturday afternoon, it's going to be torn up, but there's also operating costs of watering that grass, caring for that grass. We have to send our maintenance people out and mow that grass, but we've already got the base of a turf field. We have a turf field now. We aren't starting from scratch, so.
I think that decision was made when the turf was put internationally, I would agree.
You don't go back.
There are a lot of operational costs that lawns have that turf doesn't have, and especially the biggest thing really is being able to use it, you know, 10 times as often from all the different sports. A lot of communities use them for youth sports, whether it's soccer or flag football or tackle football, so it really just makes it a lot more accessible to the community, I guess would be the way to put it.
And the turf that we have in right now is, as we've said, it's at or near end of life, and we've got a safety issue at this point to consider, that we need to make sure that that has got enough cushion in it to be safe for our students that are on it.
It's all right at the moment, but it will not be shortly.
As I say, it is within, you know, it is a safe field right now, but we need to start the ball rolling now, so we don't get to the point where it's obsolete.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Make sure I understand. The issue that we're talking about tonight that is on our agenda is the fee for their work.
Correct, design.
We're doing design.
It's not, we're not talking about the scope of the work on this issue.
It's just design, and with that design, we will narrow down the scope because It's just design, and with that design, we will narrow down the scope because they're going to be working with us on what we want to be completed.
Okay. And Paul, I think you said the four and a half percent is a very favorable.
Very favorable rate.
Is there any chance, since we're only talking about Churchill tonight, that we can lock in that four and a half percent as it relates to Stevenson and Franklin?
That is a great idea, and I will certainly try to do that as soon as we can, because that fee is only going to go up, I think, in the next couple of years.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
Okay. So, this is, we do have to put this on for Monday, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. All right, then we're going to move to G, which we're moving up to D.
I appreciate you.
D, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate you moving that up on the agenda, just simply because it's the final piece that we have.
And the letter from Plantware.
And so, I figured we'd bundle it together while everybody's sitting.
Actually, I had four or five more things I wanted to go over.
I'm sorry, you're way behind us a lot of time.
We've spoken on a couple of occasions about secondary furniture for the middle schools, high schools, and Garfield Community School. I want to specify that we're talking about two-person desks and chairs, and then also a small amount of stand-up desks for Garfield Community School. So, taking this, we have this as one, because Garfield has, or I'm sorry, the Skill Center has always been considered a secondary school, serving our eighteen and twenty-six-year-olds in the program. So, bundling this together made sense to say we're talking about secondary furniture, even though the needs for Garfield Community School with regard to the Skill Center programs will be slightly different than the middle schools and high schools that we're purchasing items for. So, to that end, we have two-person desks, slightly different at Garfield Community School, simply because they have less students maximum in a class. We could go to the little bit bigger version, so they're going to have sixty-inch two-person desks at Garfield, but because of the amount of students that would be in a general classroom, we are going with the fifty-four inch, let me land on fifty-four.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, my apologies. Fifty-two inch two-person desk. And actually Staples Business Advantage made us that customize for a very good price, just a little bit more than their standard forty-eight inch. So, that was customized because we felt that we didn't want to squish the, you know, the teenagers in all too close, but we also couldn't go with the full sixties because you need a certain number of these in a classroom, and it just wouldn't fit in the classroom properly. So, the two-person desks were on, always on the docket. This is just the final phasing of it for the secondary schools. Related to that, we have the chairs that would go with them. So, the middle schools and high schools and Garfield will be getting the same chairs that we've had. These are all change orders based upon the previous contracts that we have with both Staples Business Advantage and Interior Environments. So, we're looking at chairs to bring in for middle schools and high schools to go. Some of them still needed to bring the chairs in to match up with the two-person desks. Some of them had thrown those chairs onto the order back when they did single desks because they knew that the two-person desks were coming, so the numbers may not match up perfectly if you take a look at those. So, don't try to go through the math on that. Some of them need chairs and some of them don't. The final piece on Garfield is because of the program and the needs of some of the students, they need some chairs with arms. Our standard chair has no arms. They needed a chair with arms, so we were able to choose another chair that, if not hundred percent, they really needed a handful of chairs in every classroom for students who may have a seizure disorder or a physical disability, that they needed the extra bracing. So, we'll see that in the line items when you look at the orders out. And then, the one person, one person, the stand-up desks that we had ordered previously, again, a change order, we're adding some because the Skill Center program wanted to put for some flexibility and for our students, like two in a classroom, to have the stand-up desk good throughout. So, those are the items for secondary furniture. We can see here that through Staples Business Advantage, two-person desks, and the items for Garfield total out to two hundred and two thousand five seventy-one and sixty cents. And from Interior Environments, getting classroom chairs, and the items from them for Garfield comes a hundred and three thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Scott, do you want to run through the specifics on the tab for them? Is there anything you wanted to add before we get there?
Yeah, at one point of clarity, this Garfield is not the same thing as the lounge furniture that we presented previously.
Thank you.
This is more in the classroom itself, and it also does not include the GSRP wing of that school. That furniture's been deemed sufficient and functional for the needs there. Yeah, I think the only other thing is, you know, a lot of this stuff is, are things we took pricing for, we've dealt with in the past. The two-person desk itself is kind of a new component. So, just to take you through some of the history, we've engaged, we've been engaged with these two vendors for a couple of years now, so we asked them to give us some ideas. What do you have that meets this educational requirement? And we looked at some different ones, we priced them out, we saw, there's physical sample, we always get samples, so we can kind of scratch and sniff and see how it works. That's kind of how we, you know, normally, I think we've got forty-eight inch desks in the secondary classrooms now, but it kind of depends where the legs are, you know?
It does.
So, if they're in too much, then.
The desks now are older desks, and while it's still a two-by-four configuration, the current older versions have these skinny little metal legs literally on the corners of all four desks. So, sliding two chairs in there fits, but even with that, the teacher's like, yeah, they're sometimes a little closer than I, you know, than they want to be to each other. But the chairs fit because at a full four feet, those are where those legs are. The newer ones are, I mean, they are so superior in the stability and strength of what the legs are because they can lever the legs out, but they've brought them in a bit to stabilize those tables. And once we had them, and it's a good thing like Mr. Smith was saying, get them in, you check them out, we put two chairs into them, and they weren't necessarily fitting the same way they used to, and then if you put two people in them, it was more of a, we're right next to each other situation, and we said, well, we need to figure something out. So, through a lot of work, a lot of trial and error, a lot of tape measure, walking through some classrooms, we got down to just adding the extra four inches would be enough to swing those legs out a little bit more and give us the space that we needed and have the rooms still hold them.
And at the end of the day, this is a desk from alumni, this is the same company that's been providing all the other desks in the, throughout the district the last couple of years. One thing you'll notice, we've been going with a hard plastic top on all the other ones. When you get wider, when you get into a two-person setting, all the tops become like a high-pressure laminate, which is similar to the big tables we bought at the elementaries, but they just don't offer a hard plastic top at that size. But, very nice table, if anybody's interested, up at Conference Room B, there's a sample of it, but that's the idea. So, it's made by alumni, they're a company out of Canada that's provided all the other desks.
Mrs. Bradford.
On the Garfield Community School furniture summary, can you talk about the four-leg alphabet chairs?
Yes.
I'm curious.
So, that's basically the standard chair that we've been providing at all of the secondary schools. As you'll recall, at the elementary level, we went with a cantilever version of it.
Okay.
Which has a different setup on the bottom, but it has a little bit more wiggle to it, too. This is the same chair that we provided in all the other secondary.
Oh, they're just all an alphabet chair.
That's the model number. Arcobell would be the company, the model is alphabet, and they have it in a four-leg or cantilever style. Then, the two-person desks are similar to what we've got at the elementaries. I'm sorry, the stand-up desks.
Yeah, secondaries are there.
And the armchairs as well, we added. Those are kind of unique, but a smaller quantity overall.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. On the secondary schools furniture summary page, I'm curious why Stevenson has an order for fifty-six two-person desks, but four hundred and seventy-two chairs?
Again, I don't want you to.
Do you want to?
Yeah, they had a, go ahead.
No, is this because, like, the chairs?
In some of the, they did not, when they ordered chairs in the first round, on some of the desks they have in, say, science labs or some of the other places where they have chairs, they did not replace those at that time.
Oh, okay.
Which we were expecting to do, so we're catching up with their.
That makes sense, then.
I'm trying not to throw them under the bus. Let's just say, on this last order, it took a few tries for the schools to get their numbers right because we had to ask a couple of extra times to say, are you sure you have what you need? And I think we finally got it.
Well, it's pretty obvious that it's not a matched set.
Yes. Correct.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so this will go on as well. The regular agenda.
Yes, next week, I'll have it. Please.
All right. Okay, so that ends our binder.
We're halfway through building site.
You know, I gave Mr. Francis a timeframe, and he's just like.
I don't think I've talked more than three minutes.
What timeframe?
It's been dead air most of it.
He's got a point. You said he could talk three minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Scott, thank you very much.
Paul, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, so now that'll take us to E, which is now F, Playground Equipment Purchase 2013 by.
Sorry. Okay. I had to tear my, my staple. Second.
Playground.
So, playground, I want to give an update.
Playground equipment. It was E, it's not what I was.
The playground equipment, when we've discussed in previous meetings and most recently at the last study session that we had two weeks ago, we, I want to give the board an update on where we're at with regard to the purchase. So, we had done a, the committee, I say we, the Playground Committee, had gone through all the research and background that we, that we were able to and found certain playscapes and individual events that we narrowed down for buildings, giving them a survey, so to speak, for each building stating, you have from this many full playscapes, you know, and I think we have six different choices on there, and from this variety of individual events, as they call them. If you're a K four, you know, choose this way. If you're a five-six, choose this way and this amounts of items. And what we wanted was as much information from them, there would actually be overkill, so to speak. So, they may only be getting zero. There's a building not getting any playscapes potentially. There are buildings that are potentially getting one playscape, and there might even be building, potentially getting two full playscapes. What we wanted though was them to choose more than and say, what's your first choice? What's your second choice? What's the one you would do with your K ones? What's the ones you would have your two fours playing on? So, we gathered that information from each building. Each building did it differently, but for sure, they were talking to PE teachers or other staff members or people who are familiar with the playground. Same with the individual events. We said, rank out the individual events. So, bringing that back, we went through the consortium with Great Lakes Recreational, and they had priced out for, with unit pricing, with installation and the mulch and the timbers that go around it and the whole thing. So, we gave them as much as we had and said, please, interestingly enough, a lot of the buildings chose the same. It's, I wonder if they talked to each other, if it really lands that way, but they chose many of the very, very similar items. There are some items that nobody chose, and there are some items that just mass amounts chose. So, we gave that to them, and we received all that information back. So, sky's the limit, we talked about renovations. If we had unlimited funds, you know, let's just buy everything for everyone and call it a day. Well, obviously, we don't have that type of luxury. So, where we're at at this point is we have pricing on the items, we have the items that the buildings would like and the rank order of them. What we're doing now is a small subgroup from the Playground Committee is going to sit down and say, what does each building actually need replacing? Some buildings have items already removed, some buildings have, like, for example, a playscape or an individual event that is still, has years of life on them. You know, if we could afford it, like I said, let's rip out everything, put it new, but that's not the reality of where we're living. So, we're going to whittle down each building and say, we've got their list, now let's replace what they need replacing. And if we happen to get to a happy place where there's a lot of money left over, then sure, we can say, let's get them an extra individual event, but we have to find that place. So, what we forecast is for the next round of board meetings, probably won't put it on a study session because we've talked about it enough, but we'll bring back final pricing on this purchase that's going through consortium pricing with an additional discount on the installation because of the volume. We'll bring that back once we have the final number and ask for, give you a recommendation and ask for board approval so we can have that order done up. If we get into the queue even in December with regard to school districts who want to put in playground equipment in the spring, we'll be in there in a good time. We'll be in there in an early line, so to speak. So, that's where we're at. We've got, I want to thank just publicly everyone that was on the Playground Committee. They worked very hard. We worked through last year and into this school year. They did a lot of work. They are so committed to wanting to get the right things for kids. And then, you know, certainly Mrs. Scott and Mr. Law have been a very big help with regard to, you know, you'll see the three of us wandering around playgrounds, you know, staring and looking at what schools will have. We're now getting down to the point where we're going to be able to say, they have this and it has years of life in it, it remains, they've already had this removed or we need to remove this still. So, we're looking at playscapes, individual events, and I didn't mention swings as well. So, we're looking at swings in the buildings, okay?
Mrs. Bradford.
Did the schools know? I'm just curious. I hope you told them.
No.
That this was a list, that, because you said maybe some schools won't get anything. Are they aware that when they were doing it?
The schools, yes.
That it was, sky's the limit, what would you like?
The instructions were, choose this, rank order this, knowing that we need you to rank order things because we're going to go as far as your needs and our budget can get us, yes.
But, I thought you also said that every school was going to have something, no?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. In fact, when it first went out, Mrs. Scott.
Oh, because I thought you said somebody could get zero, and I'm like.
Of a large playscape.
Okay.
And that school, knowing going into it, they didn't even choose one.
Gotcha.
Because they knew. Mrs. Scott actually took the time to drive around the entire district one day and hand each principal the thing and walk them through it and say, this is what we're doing, this is what you need to do, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I was out, I was out. She did that one, I don't know. I was at a workshop.
So, I just want to clarify that publicly.
Yes.
Because I want to make sure that everyone understands that every school will be getting some new playground equipment. So, there are some schools, specifically our upper elementary schools, where the need to add another playscape is not where their needs are. It may be to add individual events, it may be to add a walking track, it may be to add some additional swings. So, every school will get playground equipment.
Okay, good.
The K four schools and the five-six. Again, PTAs and schools themselves and the district have replaced those large playscapes at different times. You may recall approving one for Cleveland a couple of years ago. So, Cleveland, for instance, would not be getting two playscapes, in all likelihood, they'd be getting one and then individual events. And so, the schools, we had many of the schools represented, quite frankly, on the Playground Committee, but specifically those schools where they wouldn't be getting a playscape are aware of that, but they would be getting other equipment. And so, as you know, we have a budget, and that was what we brought forth in our planning meeting a couple of weeks ago, when we spent a lot of time going through, you know, what expenditures do we have left in the bond? And so, if we did literally everything on the list, we would be over budget. And so, really, this is the point in time where we'll go back and trim that a little bit.[1799.73] Again, you know, as Mr. Francis said, we, you know, we have not only the equipment review that was done last year, the safety review where every piece of equipment in the district has been studied. Some, some of that was removed, some of that we're, we know is closer to end of life, some has, has, has quite a bit of life. And so those are the, the more minute details that, that the team will go through now to make that determination. And then when we bring it forth to you, we'll bring back photos and, and, you know, displays of what, what those will look like and a little bit more about what the schools have chosen. But we needed to bring it back a little bit more in line with, with the budget than it is currently.
Okay.
And, and a related note, as you know, because you approved earlier, the purchase of four pieces of equipment for four of the K4s who were, were hitting hardest. Actually, one was Webster, so it's not a K4. But that, that's come in recently, been installed. Some of you may or may not have, have seen them. There's a lot of excited children in those buildings and, and I was actually on one of the items at one point. There may have been two items, Mrs. Scott is reminding me, and it is really neat to, to see them in there. So it gets you a little excited for what's to come.
Any other questions on that item? Mrs. Banfield.
Um, I think when we're talking about different schools getting different events, I think one of the things that we've talked about is having equitable solutions across the board. So I don't think it's that, I guess this is one of those, so the public knows kind of thing, right? Is that, again, same as the roofs and everything else, things have been replaced along the way. So we're bringing everybody up to an equitable solution. Nobody's going to have more or less. It may be some that are, just are in place that have some useful life, same as we've done with all of our buildings. My question is, is there going to be, while they're out there putting in the, the new solutions and the playscapes and stuff, is there going to be any sprucing up or like repairs that are either going to come out of the, maybe out of the sinking fund to, like, just make sure that some of the older events or some of the used events are, you know, kind of spruced up so, you know, the whole playground looks kind of new-ish or we don't really?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking at each playground in totality.
Okay.
That means if, if something is, needs to be removed still.
Yeah.
Then, then it'll be removed.
Or just show ground cover or?
Right. If, if there's something that, that is a very small item that could be moved over, for the most part, we've said this over and over again.
You can't.
Events, you, you don't, you don't, usually it's not worth pulling them out when they have the footings, et cetera. But if we're talking about moving the turtle at one school from this side to that side, that, you know, that can be accomplished. But yes, we're, we're looking at the playground in totality, meaning that if, if it's already got up-to-date items and it, it only needs a, a few things and the track, that's, that's one item. And another place where it says, boy, we, we, we're looking at this and even though these items are here and when you stand way far away, they've got a bunch of items, but when you're up close, there's something wrong with it, we either need to repair or replace that. So we want to make sure that when we're done, again, in, 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 in total, that the playgrounds are spruced up and the items are playable, they have life in them, et cetera.
One of the kids are going to love that. Thank you so much for answering that question.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, you just keep us updated on this as we go forward.
We will, thank you.
All right, that'll take us to, I guess it's now F, that's now G, the science equipment purchase, round two, 2013 bond.
Yes, sir. Okay. You, um, yep, you likely have, if it is in your packet, the large, the large, and there's a couple of, I don't want to call them bid, both bid tabs. Let me back up for a moment. As my memo stated, this is the round two of two, so to speak, for science equipment. We did one large bid for science equipment from the science committee and that was made up of teachers led by Mr. Hillard, who is the science coordinator for the, for the district. That team of secondary science teachers came up with the list of the items that were required. We haven't gotten science equipment in, in many years. So going into the spring, we did the bid, reviewed it, and not everything that was bid out got coverage. There were items that we put in the bid and whether it was, we, we didn't put the right type of description in or we put too specific of a description in or whatever the case may be, some companies just didn't carry it or some companies were just bidding alternates to what we actually wanted, we did not get 100% of the items last spring that the committee had put in for, within the budget. So the board had approved the, the majority of the items, got those in, there's, professional development is occurring, the, the teachers at middle schools and high schools did their August PD on it, they've done more PD on it, they're using that equipment and, and from what I'm told, things are going quite well, people are excited to have new equipment. We came back to address the items that didn't get covered in that spring one. So that's what this is. This isn't, we found new things we want to spend money on. This was the items that we didn't get bid coverage on back in the spring. So we sat down with Mr. Hillard and went over the items and, and he actually went back on a couple of them to members of the committee and said, let's get the correct details and specifications of what we need. One thing that comes to mind is, are the calculators, the scientific calculators, which were difficult to get any coverage on because they wanted some specific details of them. For example, not only the functionality, but they wanted them to look not like everybody else's calculator. They wanted the, the yellow bus ones, as they call them, or something that denoted them as being school property. So it was just a feature that didn't get coverage the first go-around. So in your documents, you have the full bid tab and the results on each item and, and we had five different vendors, and these are the basically the same five vendors that bid last time as well. They, they have the equipment. What, what was done then, where all, all of them were reviewed and you may find an item in the second one then gives the, the who, who won it, so to speak. So you have the first one with everybody's numbers and the second set with who won each item. So for example, the digital scales, you can see Pasco got and the acrylic Burrit, VWR got that one. You may find on the full bid tab, an item that you see a lower number, but that wasn't the, 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 the chosen vendor. The reason for that could be one of two things. One, they did an alternate bid, they just volunteered, and, and, and this happens, companies will say, well, we don't have what you're asking for, but I'm going to throw out something else that we find to be similar and, and that way it's on record and if you want it, you can take it. It was an alternate bid that wasn't what we were looking for or it's an item that they bid that isn't compatible with other science equipment that we already purchased, that they don't, that they don't, aren't compatible with, they don't, they play well together, so to speak. So if you see something that is lower and isn't the winner, it's going to be one of those reasons. So this is, and Mr. Hillard went through this in detail. I sat with him on Friday and said, you know, talk me through those types of questions. Why, why didn't we pick this one? Why didn't we pick that one type of thing? So this amounts to the final science equipment bond purchase from that committee made up of secondary, middle school and then high school science teachers led by Mr. Hillard.
Questions? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Some of these columns, they have multiple bids. How are we supposed to tell which one is the winner?
So you have a second pack? You have two pages at everything?
Right.
And then two more pages that only have a singular one for each item?
Okay.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bradford.
Okay. Just looking at, there's a lot of variances in prices. I'm not trained to be picky, but on the slinky, the slinkies, it, the range of prices was huge, but then I see that they chose the highest priced slinky. Do you, is there, I mean, I'm.
So I mentioned a minute ago, anytime you see a price that's lower that wasn't the winner, it's one of two reasons. One, they bid an alternate that we did not ask for and wasn't fulfilling what we wanted or two, the item doesn't, isn't compatible with other science equipment that we already have. So, so we don't always take the lowest price because what you're not seeing in the price is, it may not even have been the item that we asked for. They bid an alternative out.
Could we see if Mr. Hillard has any specifics since that's such a large variance?
I don't know, I mean, I hate to, I just.
You could include something in the packet specific to that item?
That one just kind of stood out on me.
The one, two below that stands out as well for the, the stopwatches.
So we asked specifically on the slinky for Pasco because it's a sturdier build for the science classroom and not a more plasticky type.
They think they'll last long.
Correct. Yeah, so that's, so we asked for some specifics.
I see.
On some of these things and that, even though others have been.
Well, I could see, you're right, they could have been plastic, cheap ones as opposed to.
Correct. So he actually did give me the note on that, that's why I quickly ran to it.
Oh, okay.
He actually highlighted that one.
Okay.
And, and there is a few items as such, the, the slinky, the sneaky, and the snakeys, sorry, and the stopwatches are all bids specifically as the, the Pasco brand because.
I'm sure the stopwatches could be very cheap. I mean, you're talking, I mean, you want a little bit better stopwatch.
Sure, sure. So the committee did the research on, on, on items and sometimes they picked a speci, yes, they, they picked a specific, which is a perfectly legitimate way to bid something out, is to ask for an item and, and other companies, other vendors may sell that, that, that brand.
Well, we need to talk about, there's different grades of a stopwatch. I mean, if you're, you're not going to buy a cheaper stopwatch and then the kids break up.
Well, and there's many hands handling that.
Right. So you, you really need to think about that.
There's one item here too. It's mass and hanger sets that they asked for Pasco. Pasco bid on it and nobody was awarded it. There's no, there's no charge in that line.
Okay, let me look at the line here real quick for you.
Down the first page, about halfway down, the mass and hanger set.
Okay, let's see here. I think they got the Pasco one, he just didn't type it in the line. We'll have to fix that bid tab because he has a note saying that we, we, we asked for because it, it has a, a, a use, an ease of use that fits the equipment that we already have. And he has it circled on a smaller note one for me. I think he just, not, not to call him out, but I think he just missed it on, on putting it in, so.
We'll follow up with a little bit more detail on all those questions with regard to the stopwatch, the slinky and that particular item, just as a, as a follow-up.
Sure.
In the update.
All right, do you have any other questions? So we don't need to do anything on this one either.
This is going to go on next, this is going to go on.
And we'll get.
We'll get you in the update this Thursday. A follow-up, a follow-up memo from Mr. Hillard to Mr. Francis.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, now we're back on, now we're back on track here.
Yep.
Uh, so we're at H, bid result for interior doors.
The interior doors, something we had spoke about in the past at a previous study session was that we had six interior doors at Frost that when we went back this summer to do some updates at Frost, we had determined that we wanted to, to change out the doors in certain areas. Notably, the sets of doors that go to the cafeteria were still like the original doors. They, they probably should have been done the first go-around with the bond, but as we've discussed in the past, in, in the first phase, we were quite conservative with some of the things that we were doing and not doing, et cetera. So this is actually a hole over from, from doing the update from the summer work that we went into Frost. It's just something that the district said, look, we can handle getting a handful of doors. And Mr. Lau said, I'll, I'll go out and I'll, I'll get some quotes and I'll find out how much they are because I don't think it's going to be a big deal. Well, we ended up adding in a door at Roosevelt and a door at Cooper that needed to be changed out and, and that led to us needing to bid it out. So at one point, I'd come to you at a study session and said, depending on the price of, of what they, they give us, we either can go with the three quote, three written quotes per board policy and if it tips the scales, we'll need to go with a bid. So that was the gap. We did end up bidding it out.
Yeah, we tipped the scale a little bit.
And if you see, we, we actually just barely tipped the scale. Just barely tipped the scale. So we actually got a better price once we, once we had bid it out anyway. So what we're bringing to you here are three sites, Cooper, one interior door in the main office, Roosevelt, one interior door, and Frost, six interior doors, that the, the low bid was Ray Haven Group out of Livonia to fill those, those six doors. And we would be using bond dollars to purchase them. So the results of the bid, you have, you should also have, let's just the two. So I would, would ask, I would recommend Ray Haven Group for, for these interior doors and ask it to be put on the regular meeting for next week.
Any questions? Mrs. Bradford.
Because it just tipped the scale, I'm open to this, but can we put this on consent agenda? Is anyone, if we, if it goes on consent, it just means we all agree on it? Or we? No, finish your thought. Um, just because it, it just barely tips the scale, I just, we'll have a lot of things on the agenda. Is there any way this could be on consent? Just to keep the, I agree, we need to have transparency for the, for the, for the community, but I just thought if everyone is in agreement with this, if there's no other questions about it, can we put it on a consent agenda? It's not a make or break, I'm just wondering.
President Burton, you had a thought on that?
Generally, consent agenda is reserved for routine purchases and I would rather not put a bond item on a routine purchase, or on a consent agenda because I don't believe it falls under the threshold of routine purchase, even though it's close on dollars.
Okay.
That would be my thought.
Mrs. Jarvis.
I hear what you're saying, but because it just tips the scale would be my reason to not put it on consent agenda.
Okay.
So that we can follow the policy we made.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? All right, then the consensus is we'll go regular.
Yeah.
Okay.
Consensus, consensus, no consent.
Merciful. We are at item I.
What our I is, is demolition of clay. As you know, we are currently under a purchase agreement with Infinity Homes for the purchase of that property. Part of that agreement is that the district would be raising the building, the structure of clay. While, while the group is still doing their due diligence, one of the items that we need to do is to, is to go out for bid and, and raise the building. And don't forget that after the building is, during, during any demolition, Infinity has the right to hire at their own expense a third party, a consultant to oversee and ask questions if we veer from the plan of, that we have for demolishing. And then they get 45 days to, to inspect the, the land after the building's been removed. Okay? So specifically to our bid, we had quite a bit of coverage in, in this. I believe it's 13 last I counted, but, and, and some, some, some large variance in the, in the numbers. You have the bid tabs, you have Mr. Lau's memo that, that lists them as well in, in order now, not, not in order, but in alpha. So what I wanted to, to explain is the recommendation that the board or that the administration's given to the board is the lowest qualified bidder being saling bin trucking and excavating out of Dundee, Michigan. Now, while they are not the lowest dollar amount, they are, they, they have the best interview, they have the best reputation and they have the lowest bid of those that came through the interview process or that we may have worked with in the past. I will give an example that we've used one of the companies in the past for demolition and we were not satisfied with that company's, I was going to say product, but work, thank you. With, with the work that was done and the results that, that occurred from, from that. So there were others that, that are on this list that first of all, didn't qualify, they didn't turn in everything on their bid, in their bid packet. Or again, through the interview process and through the due diligence that we do by calling on. interview process and through the due diligence that we do by calling on backgrounds for, for their work and other clients, found results and responses that we were not satisfied with, with regard to recommending them to, to do the demolition, so.
Okay, any questions?
Would you speak to the alternate? With regard to demolition?
Oh, thank you, I apologize, I, I froze my brain for a second there. The alternate was actually the parking lot and peeling off the asphalt, the asphalt, we were going to leave the substructure there. So, this was something that is an item that we do intend to do, is to peel back the asphalt. When we put it in the bid documents, we put it as an alternate, so it was an alternate that we requested in it, but through conversations amongst our team as well as agreements with, with the purchaser, the removal of the asphalt is something that we want to remove, and the substructure is something that the purchaser would like us to leave so they could park their heavy equipment on that area. Thank you, I don't know why, but I just kind of went down for about 30 seconds.
Any other questions? Someone freeze, Mr. Francis Frank?
We'll have this next week.
Yes, regular. And on that, Mr. Francis, you're free to go.
Thank you much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And President Burton, that completes building a site.
The next item on our agenda is item five, Policy Committee, and I will be turning the meeting over to Mrs. Frank.
Thank you, President Burton. We have a couple of board policies to review and update, thank you very much, President, or Superintendent Outless for providing this for us. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We'll just take a glance through these, we've had, I shared them with you, although we did not go through them in detail in our study session. We'll start with Board Policy DJD. Again, for the most part, these are policies which had been previously reviewed by a subcommittee with regard to making minor changes to board policy. This particular policy, Fiscal Management and Expense Reimbursement, has language added in red at the end where it says, "The employee shall be reimbursed by the district for mileage in accordance with IRS guidelines." So, there was just a modification to indicate that we would follow, and those are normally updated normally on an annual basis, although sometimes if there's a significant variance that may be updated more regularly. Sometimes that amount goes up, sometimes it goes down, but, but we always share that back out with our, with our folks, and, and so we add, recommend adding that verbiage to the end of that policy, and then the date will be updated. Any questions? The second policy, IDB, again, these are, these are not structural or content changes, these are primarily cleanup language. Board Policy IDB, Instructional Program Health Education. The second, the second line itself in the first sentence talks about consultative and preventative health services is generally the responsibility, it said, of city and county government, however, we really receive our guidance on that from Wayne County. And so, we took out the city reference in that, changed the word accord to an accordance, and then just changed to reflect the name of the department to Wayne County Department of Public Health as the name of the current department that exists for that purpose.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes, I'm sorry, President Burton.
That same, in the sentence previous, Wayne, Wayne County Department of Public Health appears actually twice, and the correction was only made on the second one.
Good.
If you look up one line...
Yeah, we'll make that, thank you.
Sneaky going to another line. Anything else?
Alrighty. The Policy IDFB, we would recommend removal of that policy. It references intermural, intermural activities, although we do have many opportunities for extracurricular activities, athletics, programs, clubs, sports, and so on. We do not have intermural, intermural activities that exist in the schools. This is a policy back from 1988, and we would recommend removal of this policy. As you know, part of our, our process is to also vote on removal of policy from, from our, our board book. Finally, Board Policy JQE is with regard to, it's a policy under, our large policy of, under J, of students with regard to students who may be pregnant. There's a statement that is added to this in regard to, the policy itself states that a pregnant student has all the rights and responsibilities of other students, including continuing attendance in class and so on, and that that should be based on recommendation of her physician. We've added the line, "The student's school may request medical verification of the student's ability to continue in all classes in her program." And so, that recommendation was, was added, that, that, that the school would have the ability to request that verification, that is referenced in the prior sentence.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes the policy.
Thank you. The next item is item six, Brooklyn Committee. Mrs. Bradford, I don't know, have anything?
Nothing, nothing tonight.
I do not.
Okay. Item seven is Legislative Committee, Mrs. Jarvis?
I actually do have a couple of things that we need to be aware of. There are three Senate bills that are active at the moment that concern us. One of them is a package, Senate Bill 584, 585, which is a concealed carry bill, and this could be voted on this week, and this would be allowing handguns to be concealed, carried concealed in schools and daycares.
They'll be taking public comment on that tomorrow at 2:00, I heard.
And with that, there's another one, Senate Bill 586, it's part of that same package. 586 would prohibit schools from creating policies which are stricter than state or federal laws. This is obviously with reference also to handguns, but they're not really thinking broadly because this removes local control from the school boards, and it would affect us in, in terms of other issues. For example, tonight, we talked about a state threshold on, that, that the state was trying to set for bids, and ours is lower, ours is more restrictive than the state's. We wouldn't be required to update that policy annually. What if the state were to set a policy and they've been discussing about teachers requiring, not require, teachers to be certified? We would not be in a position then to require that all our teachers be certified. They don't understand the implications of this outside of handguns. So, if these are issues that are important, then we need to discuss these in the public comment area. And then also, Senate Bill 574 is still kicking, and I know that Andrea probably has stuff to tell us about that.
Not surprising, Mrs. Jarvis, I do.
Thank you for bringing forward that, that other legislation, which certainly has taken a front seat just in, in the past couple of days, so I appreciate you bringing, bringing that forward, and we certainly encourage our, our school community to be aware of the legislation related to, to the open carry and concealed carry guidelines that, that are, that are looking to be modified. I do want to speak specifically to Senate Bill 574 with regard to the enhancement millage and the ability with this legislation for the enhancement millage to go beyond, an ISD's enhancement millage to go beyond servicing the students in the public schools as currently identified as part of legislation, but to then include public school academies and charter schools as part of that, the dollars that are levied and collected within that ISD. So, with this bill first came forward, there were, you know, two significant areas of concern. One was that the bill would potentially be retroactive to current millages. So, there are six ISDs in the state of Michigan, Wayne County being one of them, that have successfully passed enhancement millage in the past year to 18 months. And one of the concerns was there was some ambiguity in the initial language with regard to when, if this legislation passed, when the charters and PSAs would be able to begin taking a portion of that money as well as part of their, their per pupil funding. That language has been clarified in what the House Committee has ta, has taken a look at and voted out of committee, and so it would be a prospective bill, meaning for any votes going forward with regard to enhancement millages. So, it would no longer impact our current ISD millage nor for the five other regional enhancement millages that have been passed. However, we are encouraging, strongly encouraging a no vote, plain and simple, on this bill. There are, the issue of school funding is extraordinarily complex. We believe that there is really important work underway right now with regard to the Funding Collaborative, which is a bipartisan, you know, multi-unit group of individuals, business leaders, community leaders, education professionals across all, all areas of our state, taking a, a deep and thorough look at adequate funding for our schools, which takes an even deeper look beyond the school adequacy study that was done last year. This collaborative is taking a look at funding for not only, you know, general education students, but the specifics of funding students with special needs, students who are English language learners, and their work is slated to be reported out in January of 2018. We are not looking to make the, the concern with Senate Bill 574 a charter school versus a public school issue. We understand that there are needs that exist for students and educating students across the state of Michigan. The funding of those, the, the way we fund schools is complex and deserves careful and thorough study. This legislation is moving very quickly. We would ask that our legislators take a pause, which is, which is certainly needed in this regard. We are taking an issue which would impact our district to the tune of about $1.3 million a year, a loss if, if that legislation were to be changed, and potentially even broader. This legislation impacts districts who have a different complexity across a county as, as large as Wayne County. And so, there are districts within that county who are donor districts like we are. We've discussed that openly and publicly when we first put this on the ballot, which means we collect more in taxes than, than we receive, than we receive back because of the property values. And even with that, our community took a careful look at the millage that was passed recently in 2016 and determined that the needs of funding our public schools were so great that they were willing to make that determination to support the ISD enhancement millage, which has benefited students across Wayne County, including our students, to the tune of about $380 per pupil this year and for the next five years. So, with that funding, as you know, we've made really significant commitments to our learners with regard to additional school supports at all levels, our literacy coaches, our, our textbook purchases, and our social emotional support we've been able to provide to students, and then very specific work related to the legislation of the, the third grade reading bill, which many of those pieces of legislation were required to be enacted this fall. So, with that money, we have, we have made really significant inroads in meeting the needs of our students and enhancing the supports to our staff in order to meet the needs of students. As you know, we've been careful and judicious about that. We've also taken a look at the issue of retaining and hiring quality staff across the board as well as growing and stabilizing our fund balance. All of those things have been able to move us very significantly in a positive direction. We are so excited about what this enhancement millage has been able to do for the children and, and our staff in Livonia Public Schools. Our concern is if this legislation were to be enacted, and we would now be going beyond the 33 school districts in Wayne County, and these levies and these funds would now go out to not only those schools, but 110 additional charter and public school academies, which would dilute the per pupil funding by about $90 per student. That is a significant shift from that which we originally had planned. And really taking that a step further, that may impact whether or not this would even come up to, to be a ballot question in the future, because districts in Wayne County may or may not choose, boards of education may or may not choose to even put this question on the ballot. If that were to be the case, then we would not be looking at a $90 per pupil change, we would be losing the, the additional $380 per pupil that at that point in time, we would have had in place for six years. So, at this point in time, we are requesting that our local legislators move forward with a no vote on this legislation. We believe that, again, there's important work being done with regard to the Funding Collaborative, taking a look at the complex issue of school funding. We believe that that's worthy of, of a pause and, and time and thoughtful consideration. And so, that is certainly our recommendation going forward, and we've had the opportunity, we appreciate the opportunity to meet with Representative Cox last week, had, you know, very important dialogue with, with her and members of her team and, and members of ours as well, and had an opportunity to look at this issue in depth. And I know those conversations are happening in districts across the state, and so we wanted to be sure to update you on that. I know our Board of Education will also be weighing in on that, that topic with our local legislators as well.
Mr. Downson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bradford and I were in attendance last Thursday night at the Wayne County General Board Meeting, and at the end, to your, one of your last points, is it, it seemed to be the consensus that if this passes, it's going to have a significant chilling effect on future millages. To just about a person that, that we talked to was, it's going to be very, very difficult to get these measures on the ballot in the future. So, it's, it's a situation where, yes, it's, it's funding, but that source, which is our only source of, of additional revenue, we can't do it at a local level, you can only do it at the ISD level, that that is quickly going to dry up. Because as you indicated, Mrs. Oakley, the, the donor districts are not going to be willing to, to do that when, when they're getting a significant cut. So, you know, it was, it was a pretty solemn discussion as it related to that particular legislation and the effect it's going to have on, on future millages. And I just, I think they're right, I think if this passes, I think you're going to see an end to, we're going to be four years down the road, you're not going to get another millage on the, on the ballot, I'm afraid.
Just along those lines too, I, last week, I think the House did, had the votes to put it on the floor, but...
They did or didn't?
They did not. But that doesn't mean that we won't see it come up either later this year or after lame duck, which is a year from now, but after a lot, state elections. So, I think we have to keep it kind of top of mind, even though if it does go away, that it's something that we communicate to our legislators that consistently that this is not something good for us.
I actually spoke with someone in Representative Cox's office today, and she said that this is moving very quickly, and they think that it may be put on, on an agenda for a vote this week. And I said, "Exactly when does this week mean?" And she said that would mean agendas are for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and it would have been, you know, she said it would be generally published on Monday, but it can be, this is moving very quickly and maybe voted on this week.
Okay. Okay.
So what, what we had heard a few weeks ago, which is completely consistent with what you were saying, all of a sudden is changing very, very fast. That in and of itself gives me alarm.
Yeah.
If, if legislation is trying to be flown through the system that quickly without time to, to study it and really gather opinions and reactions from folks, that is concerning to me. Why are they trying to crack through so fast?
And that's the million dollar question.
Do it before everyone's, you know, while, while people are not even realize what's going on.
$1.3 million question.
There's, there's a lot that could be said.
Or $5 million question in our case.
We have to pass it before we read it.
I would suspect that, I disagree with your thought about the number of millages that could be brought on the ballot, because under this legislation, each PSA or charter school would be considered its own district, and you need to have a percentage of districts to bring it to the ballot. I think it could go on the ballot, but I think that districts and counties would vote it down because they don't want their dollars going to support private schools.
To that point, that very point was discussed, and it was still, the majority of the people in the room figured it would not even get to the ballot. You would not get the number of districts necessary to put it on the ballot.
It's sad when that's our only way to get funding.
It is?
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One thing that is, that is significant, too, and as Mrs. Oakley said, funding traditional public schools is, costs a different amount than, than funding charter schools. And the two very significant pieces that jump right out above and beyond Special Ed that was discussed is the cost of the retirement, which we are legally bound to take care of, to an enormous percent of, percentage of our budget, and the cost of transportation. And while it's true that we're not required to transport, if we did not, we would be the only community outside of Rose Point, the entire state of Michigan that does not. So therefore, if we made that decision to not, suddenly not, transport students, that would be ridiculously devastating to our community and therefore our school district, or, or in the opposite order. But it's, it's not realistic to not transport students, and it's certainly not legally allowable to not fund the retirement system. But those are two enormous pieces of our budget that charter schools simply don't have to budget for. So it's, while, while all children are important in educating every child, whether they're in traditional public or charter or, or private schools, I believe they should all have the highest quality education possible. The fact remains, it costs different, a different amount of money to fund a traditional public school.
Has anybody heard of, I mean, we all know that public schools have been underfunded. We're feeling that, we've been feeling it for years. But has anyone heard specifically of charter schools or public school academies saying they don't have enough funding? I have not, which makes me wonder why this is even necessary, other than to, again, be detrimental to public schools by not bringing this as, as a potential way to get funding. That's legislative before I get on my soapbox.
Yes. All righty. The next item is item eight, Personnel. Mr. Centers?
Oh, Mr. Archibald.
Yes.
For the first time, Mr. Archibald?
For those of you who may have missed our special meeting just prior to this meeting, we were, this board was given the pleasure of appointing Mr. Steve Archibald to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and District Services, a position that we are thrilled to have him serve in, for which he has received an enormous amount of support in this district. So we're very, very excited to have that position filled by someone so capable and so well-respected in this district, and we look forward to, to see what you're doing in your new position.
We have reached the end of our agenda tonight. Thank you to those of you who have hung in with you. Yes, it's not quite been that yet, but it sometimes can feel like after these meetings. Thank you very much for your, your patience and your attention. We are now at the end of our, our agenda. The numerous items that may be voted upon as a result of the work of this meeting will be voted upon in our next meeting, next Monday night. We are now adjourned. Have a good evening.